Hey, where's everybody? I saw Wink Cam was here, so.
Hey.
Hey.
How are you? Can I ask you, is there anywhere to get water in the building?
Uh.
It was a fat cookie.
Oh, now you need glass.
They usually have cups on top of the, uh.
Oh, yeah. Oh, good.
Hi, June.
Oh, you finally have.
The planning board meeting of February 20th, 2024, it's 7:19 PM. And this meeting is being recorded by Wink Cam. If you, uh, don't wish to hear the recording, I don't think anyone will because they're not here. I was gonna say mute your microphone and turn off your camera, but that's not applicable to a non-Zoom meeting. So roll call attendance. Nick?
Present.
Carrie?
Present.
Yi Ching?
Present.
And I am present. Hooray. And Taylor is away on vacation and DM is away on family matters. Um, and he said he's available by phone. So I have one update, but does anybody else have one?
Um, go ahead with yours. I do have a housing partnership, uh, sorry. Housing Production Plan meeting that happened last week.
And?
Oh, so update, um, it was the second meeting with the committee that is working on it. And it's a committee made up of multiple, um, reps from different organizations around town. Um, they are looking forward to future public meetings. One which will be held fairly soon with real estate people and developers. And another one with renters, um, in town or people who are looking to rent.
Right. Perspectives.
Perspectives. And then there will be some public engagement things later on.
Wow.
So.
And the deadline to file with the state is?
Oh geez.
Is it the end of this year? This calendar year or is it soon?
I can't, I can't say for sure, but it's, it's, it's coming to sort of a full boil.
So Carrie, Nick, updates?
Yep.
So the one update I have is that, um, the public hearing for the planning board articles for town meeting to be held before the warrant closes is happening the night before the warrant closes because we ran up against a posting deadline. Um, so the warrant closes on the 15th of March, which if I'm not mistaken, is a Friday. So we're gonna have to have a planning board meeting on Wednesday night, uh, excuse me, Thursday night, the 14th to bless the final product. Um, and we might consider leaving, uh, open that Tuesday, the 12th in case we really need to burn some midnight oil. Um, so that's gonna be the public hearing for our planning board articles on Thursday, March 14th. Um, location and time to be confirmed. Um, so we had some minutes to review and I can take them out of the bag. And, uh. And did anybody have any minutes, I mean, any edits to the minutes?
So for February 6th, 2024, um, I read through them and I did not have any comments.
Okay. Anyone else?
No comments or corrections?
No.
So I have only one. A little miss English teacher here. Um, on, I'm sorry, my eyes are watering from allergies. On the second page at the top where it says, Mr. Carlon appreciated the developers' responses, noted the importance of making vegetation at the private courtyard level visible from below, and raised concerns that the cast stone used at the base of the entrance does not absorb stains. Um, I, I just wanna make sure that it communicated that he doesn't want it to absorb stains. So I guess saying raised concerns that it not absorbs stains, does that say the right message?
That it might absorb stains.
Um.
Maybe it's a better.
Well, so what, I looked at the tape, um, or, yeah, I looked at the tape and what it was is that, um, the proponent, I forget his name now, um, was saying, and we're gonna use cast stone at the base. And Dennis Carlon said cast stone can stain. Um, and he said, well, we can address that. And when I looked it up, it seemed that it can be sealed.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not gonna micromanage that right now. This is fun. The, the message was that it does not stain. Does everybody feel it? Yeah, okay. And that's all I had to add. Um, so I would entertain the motion to approve the minutes of February 6th.
Um, with your edits?
With that one edit. Oh, no, with no edits.
No edits. You're, you're.
Yeah, just leave it. His concern is that it not stain.
All right. Make a motion to approve the February 6th minutes.
A second.
Uh, I guess roll call. Yi Ching?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Sally says aye. Carrie?
Aye.
Okay. So then we go on to the minutes of the 20th.
13th.
Excuse me, the 13th. This is the 20th. Um, and I had no edits. Anybody else?
No edits.
I just, just recalling that we didn't want fast food or we wanted to make it by special permit.
Yeah, and I think, um, that is what is, let's see, where is that?
I, I don't know whether we wanted it all, but, but, but these are the minutes, so.
Right. These are the minutes and we're gonna actually address that very question this evening.
Uh, cause it was just occurring to me that, that most special permits pass. I mean, uh, there are a few that, one notable one that didn't, but, uh, anyway, that's, that's another conversation.
To that when we go through the worksheets that Nick prepared for us. And so, um, so we've approved the minutes and what we're gonna do in this meeting.
No, no, we, I proposed that we approve February 13th.
Oh, you, you didn't?
No.
Oh, thank you.
I second.
And now we may.
Aye.
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 So the agenda says we're also gonna talk about MBTA 3A. And we're not. We're gonna focus the entire meeting on the North Main Street rezoning. Um, and it's the quantitative elements of the North Main Street zoning, all the charts and tangles, and then the uses themselves. Um, so Taylor provided an excellent handout, to which I am grateful, um, which I scribbled on, of course. He created a, oh, I left my map taped to my wall. I'll look at, I'll look at Carrie's while we're talking if I get confused.
I actually have a spare.
So you.
You have one down here in your packet below your computer.
Oh, underneath my computer. That's exactly right. So we have a map and the map shows the North Main Street subdivisions that are currently, um, what we're working for, um, working with and on. And, um, uh, we're gonna go through the worksheets that Nick provided. Taylor.
Taylor.
That's right. That's right. Give you all the credit, right? That Taylor provided and we're gonna look at, um, I figured out that it's 10 aspects of the dimensional standards. And we're doing it across seven districts. And then we're gonna vote for all of that. We'll apply a piece. I think DM was advising that we break it out into pieces. So maybe you can advise me on what you think would be a good way to do that. And then we're gonna go through the uses tables that Taylor, this is in Taylor's handout, pages eight to 11. Um, and in conversation with DM today, he pointed out that the expedient thing for us to do is to create a special uses table for MU1, just like there is a special uses table for CBD. Um, and that makes it incredibly easy, um, to structure and, and, uh, what we're trying to do here. Um, so the GBD two and three would come out of the main uses table of the zoning bylaws and be replaced by this new table for MU1, multi-use district number one. And we need to keep track of the definitions that we need to add to the definition section when we do that. Um, and then we're gonna take a quick look at whatever is not permitted in the existing zoning bylaws in those two districts, which becomes MU1, and make sure that we've remedied that to our satisfaction. Then we're gonna then look at the parking man mats by use because, um, talking to DM about it. I gotta open this.
Okay, so if we could maybe go forward from that. You keep mentioning MU1 and maybe for the audience and for all of us, where is MU1?
Right. So on the screen, this is excellent. Thank you very much, Yi Ching. So on the screen is a map that, at the bottom of which you can see, um, what I believe is Wedge Park. And to the right of that is some purple shading that relates to the MBTA 3A zoning for the downtown overlay. But we won't be discussing that tonight. We'll be talking about the letters W and E, west side sub-districts of North Main Street and east side sub-districts of North Main Street.
But west one and east one are 3A, right?
Well, west number one, yes, and east number one are within the overlay of MBTA 3A. But the subject of our discussion today is the underlying zoning for all seven of those sub-districts. And you'll notice on the map that there's kind of a solid line in the E1 pink. And it's about like six parcel dividing lines down from the top.
Yeah.
Um, and that corresponds to the portion of E1 that is within the half-mile radius of the train station and therefore part of our overlay district for 3A. And similarly in W1, you'll see a solid green line. Um, and that is the half-mile radius. So when we get to talking about 3A, we're gonna talk about those portions of the 3A districts in, in, um, this multi-use one area of town that are within the 3A. But we're talking tonight about all the zoning for all of North Main Street.
So when you say MU, which districts are you talking about, just to be clear?
Multi-use one is everything that is on either side of North Main Street from Skins Road to. from Skilling's Road to Cross Street. That's right.
And all of this.
Yes, it's a new.
This is all MU one.
It's all, yes, that's so.
That's the new district for.
Right. So we all have to get used to saying MU one. And then being clear in our minds, our brilliant minds, about whether we're talking about the west side or the east side.
We're gonna have to name these.
What's that?
We're gonna have to name these at some point.
Well, maybe we can, that's a good suggestion.
Not now. Not now. We have a lot to get through.
If we can capture that, I think that we should do that. Um, but right now, we're going with these sort of MIT-type monikers. Um, and the, and these zones were created with a focus on not only the depth and the size of the lots, but also the abiding uses immediately behind these neighborhoods. And with that level of sensitivity in mind, we've tried to craft dimensional requirements and other tabular ways of expressing our zoning customized to each of the seven sub-districts. That's the ambitious goal. So, um, the first thing that we're gonna do is we're gonna go into Taylor's, did you really open it, Paulie? Yeah, you did.
Uh.
I hate those.
That's mine, yeah.
Um, and we're gonna go to Taylor's handout, page two, which says height. And you'll notice that he's got for comparison purposes, the left column is the CBD, current CBD, um, zoning by right and special permit, it'd be RNSP. Um, and, uh, it's for comparison purposes as we talk about the sub-districts of multi-use district one. And you'll notice, for instance, that E one and west one, which is the east and west closest to Skilling's Road and Lake Street, where the courts are, um, match, because not only is that the concept of being, the closer we get to the Skilling's Road end of town, end of the street, the denser and the higher would the buildings be permitted to be. Um, and as you got farther and farther up the corridor, there would be more and more sensitivity. The reason that those two parcels in particular are identified for that is because they back up on the west side to DPW land, and on the east side to, um, the high school fields. And so it's not as much of a neighborhood impigment. So you'll see that W two, three, and four, as we move up the chart, all are shallow, narrow lots backing up to residential neighborhoods. There are a few notable exceptions, like the Verizon property. Um, but for the most part, they're characterized in those ways. Um, and we broke them into sub-districts for reasons having to do with specific dimensional aspects. And then on the east side, I think nine fifty-five Main Street is at E two, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the, um, the townhouses are up at E three at Cross Street. But it incorporates more than just that, because there's, I think the, the Anka House is in there. Um, so people can understand what these are. So the task at hand is for us to go through the chart on page two and to decide what we want the maximum by right building height to be. Um, and the chart that's on the next page, and you might wanna look at them side by side, is the number of stories that would correspond with that height. And I have to confess, I got a little bit tangled up with this today and went online to understand, in the world of rules of thumb and convention, a story is how many feet? And it's anywhere between ten point eight and fourteen, Eeching.
So for, like, a mixed-use building, when the ground floor is really tall for, like, a restaurant space, it could be up to fourteen, fifteen. So for, like, ten commerce, for example, it was, it was much more about, it was a big base with, you know, floor to floor would be ten to twelve, um, feet or so.
So as opposed to if it was an all-residential building, and there were apartments on the first floor?
Yeah, typically ten, yeah.
It might be, it might be maximum four stories, but it wouldn't reach the maximum height unless the developer saw there was a market reason to do so.
Yeah, and there, there could be equipment or parapets to sort of dress it up or something like that, but.
Yes, yes, I think parapets are not included in our heart concerns, but I get your point, that we want some flexibility. So if we look at, um, let's look at E one and, at least one and west one first, being closest to Skilling's Road, and you can see that we presented these to the Z-RAC and were very grateful for their input. Um, and they had such, and, and we presented to them that these are identical, and their input concurred with that, that you would have a forty-five-foot maximum height, um, for, uh, a building as of right, for the uses that we define. Um, and if you wanted to do a mixed-use building, meaning first-floor commercial, which we are trying to incentivize, um, you would have up to up to an additional twenty feet, which to me, this is what I was thinking about today, was that I just, I personally am not comfortable with sixty-five. It comes from the north core.
I'm wondering, is that, is that, uh,
It comes from the north core.
That seems high for this, even for the CBD.
Especially when in the next page, the proposed W one max for mixed use is three and a half stories. Like sixty-five feet for a three and a half stories.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was doing, I was looking back and forth between the stories and the.
They, they don't make sense.
It doesn't, doesn't match.
The reason that sixty-five is there is because the CBD zoning for the north core, which is along Main Street going from the Rotary up to, um, uh, to the Stop and Shop, okay? Um, is sixty-five feet. And if a developer wanted to come into town and develop in that PUD and not take advantage of the three A overlay, they could take advantage of a PUD overlay, which is also in place there.
That seems high.
But it's there, it's in the law.
Even for there, I mean.
Well, I can't, we can't change the one that's, that is related to CBD regulations. But this is to say that for E one and W one, say the north core was developed to a height of sixty-five feet.
Right.
Um, and then you cross Skilling's, and you are now on either side, the, E one and W one are on either side of you as you grow up. And if it's all residential, the maximum height would be forty-five feet, and if there's a mixed use of residential and commercial, it would be
Sixty-five at three and a half stories, which really still.
That doesn't match.
It doesn't, because this part doesn't have a PUD associated with it.
E one and E two. And E one and west one.
Yeah, don't, do not have a PUD associated with it, whereas the PUD only applied to certain areas of the CBD.
Only applies to the.
So, so if ten commerce could have had five to six stories at sixty-five feet with a PUD.
Does anybody remember what ended up getting approved? Because I remember it being important that those.
It was like sixty-something, it was right, it was right at that, sixty-five whatever.
Cause that decision seemed like it was pivoted off making sure the church steeple is visible in the hall's skyline.
So if there are no PUDs, and not possible for anybody in W one, east one, to have six stories, then we probably shouldn't have sixty-five feet.
And we don't say six stories right here. We say four and a half as for you, as the maximum with a special.
Right, so we're talking four, forty-five to fifty feet.
We're talking four.
E one and W one, it shouldn't say four point, three point five for the.
No, it shouldn't.
It should say.
Four point.
Okay, so for E one and east one, west one, we would say that an all-residential building, they're supposed to be the same.
Yeah.
Okay, for all-residential building in either east one or west one, we would say maximum stories of
Three.
Three?
Right, so this is wrong.
Okay.
Both of them are wrong, right?
Yeah.
Three and a four and a half.
Which to me, I, um, I almost would like to say three and a half, and I wanna tell you why in a second. Um, and then, and then.
But you wanna, you wanna have the mixed use somewhere to go.
And then you have a mixed-use incentive. Um, and there are other incentives that can be proposed to be incorporated into this, that's a late discussion in the meeting, okay? Um, there would be a mixed-use incentive that you could go to four point five stories, which would correlate to.
Be allowed forty-five feet.
I think we're really trying to prioritize mixed use for E one.
Yes.
And that's why, that's why we're giving them a, a story and a half.
Yeah, we agree. It's, it's just that these numbers are wrong for what we were, we discussed last time. And Z-RAC also heard our numbers, right? They heard three and four and a half, so.
So, so what are, what are the correct numbers in E one?
The Z-RAC proposed three and four point five in E one.
Okay.
And the Z-RAC proposed three and four point five in W one.
So Z-RAC didn't disagree with any of our numbers, except for W two. Is that what you got from their meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that would be fine.
The numbers that were in here were.
Okay, so this is more of a typo from the planning department.
I think so. And what I'm asking is, where we say a whole number, can we say a whole and a half? Like three and a half. And the reason for that is because I was reading through Michael Wayne's draft design standards, which I don't think this particular point is in our design standards now, but I'm not sure, which said that only slanted roofs would be built along the corridor. Now, I know, it's in the draft, it's, I don't think it's anything that anybody, like, took on the, to the table and talked about. But this gets to what they do in Brookline when they talk about sub-districts like this, and they correlate a building form with a roof style.
No.
I wouldn't be correct for the town.
Uh.
No, I, from what I read of the Brookline design standards, it was that they they wanted to allow all forms of roof types, but if you're gonna do a gambrel, do it right.
Do it right, right, exactly.
So they, there are some things about that, but.
I, I thought Brookline actually allowed more roof styles than just, just a slanted roof.
Oh, they absolutely do. They, they, each, each of the sub-districts.
It seems like a richer palette of, of styles to select from, and.
So if we say three and a half stories with a multi-use incentive, right? A mixed-use incentive, excuse me, do we mean three, oh, I'm sorry, we would say we would say three and a half for residential and four and a half for mixed use? And, or would we say just three and four and a half?
I forget what we said last week.
Well, you.
It was whatever Michael Wayne had suggested, we took. I don't have the notes from that.
So we have to go to the handout from the Z-RAC meeting, which I don't have.
Right, we don't have any of the stuff.
So can we say, refer back to our last meeting, we took from those numbers, and let's move on?
Yeah, I think our tension is with how many feet we have compared to how many stories.
Mike, this is where I'm getting.
Okay, wait, no, we do have. For west one and east one, recommend three floors for residential only and four and a half for multi-use.
Okay, good, that's very helpful. I was saying, can we go up to three and a half? Because we would get another level of housing.
So you're saying three and a half residential, four and a half, right?
And we would get another level of housing and still preserve that.
It doesn't give us the incentive as much as a story and a half. It only gives us a one-story incentive as opposed to a story and a half incentive to do mixed use.
Right, I, so for a developer, like, it would be more costly perhaps to, you know, they get the same amount of housing, which is sort of a moneymaker.
Right, they're not gonna do the mixed use of three or four.
All right, so three and four, I hear your point. So three and four and a half for E one, east one and west one, for as of right, all housing, multifamily housing, and by special permit, mixed use, four and a half.
Yeah.
Okay. So then we look at, well, we can look at E two and three, first of all. Um, these are the ones that back up to, um, well, they're deeper lots, much deeper in terms of their total, um, area, and they back up to residential neighborhoods. Um, and what we said there is that we would say a maximum height of residential three and a maximum mixed-use height of four stories, which correlates to, oh, we have it differently. So in the height.
You're in west two?
Yeah, no, I'm in, I'm in, I'm in east two and three.
East two and three.
So east two and three by stories would be three, or with incentive? To four.
Mm-hmm.
But if you look at the height table, it, it says forty-five for residential and so they're really looking at a five-foot difference between E two and E three. I'm sorry, I'm cutting myself off.
So could, um, okay.
Can you put the chart up on the screen?
Yeah.
I really need to understand. So what I'm, what I'm stumbling over, I don't know if you can zoom in a tiny bit. Um, granny over here. Um, you see what E two says forty-five, and E three says forty, and then E two says forty-five, and E?
Yeah.
Forty, uh, forty and forty-five, right. So I think.
A five-foot difference.
No, don't look at W, it's east two and east three. I think that we wanted there to be some growth in height as you went towards the Wilbur line on that side.
No, I think it's opposite.
Yeah, because the, the residential density is getting closer, so we're trying to add less.
Okay, so that's helpful to.
Height.
So, again, focusing on E three height and E two height, okay? Um, we have E two at forty-five residential, and E three is at forty residential. And when you look at the stories chart, which is, um, Taylor's handout, page three, it would be.
Those are consistent across E two and E three, so you'd have three stories for residential, but a different number of feet per building.
Yeah.
Well, so help me understand E two and E three on the height chart relative to E two and E three on the stories chart.
Um, not, not.
I see that, and they're different, though. Like, it goes forty-five.
Right, you, you're just gonna have, you just can't go beyond forty feet at E three. That's all.
Well, one says fifty-five and one says fifty for the, um, mixed use.
Yeah.
Is that that we're trying to scale a shorter mixed-use building, or not so?
No, you can, you can spread out four stories in fifty feet, just fine. It's, it's just a smaller floor to floor.
Okay, so why are we doing fifty-five in E two?
Um.
Yeah, E two.
I think it was just because it's not next to a bunch of, or maybe it is next, that's nine, that's nine fifty-five Main, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, nine fifty-five Main.
But there is a gradient difference, I think, if this, this.
That's right, it's a steep rise.
Yeah, there's, there's a huge gradient difference, and I think the idea was to have Skilling's be a little bit more active and, and be a sort of a center for.
Which is why we said to fifty-five feet with mixed use.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, one note here. One note here is that E three currently is at forty-five. So we're, we're kind of making it shorter now from the current zoning.
Well, that's really interesting.
I mean, it's fine, but it.
Well, so what we're talking about is setting in place policy statements that will, um, allow and encourage and incentivize changes over time. And the overtime part is
But I think.
Two years, five years, four years.
It's also to mirror this, this W four proposal, which is a lot more residential, and we wanted to make it a lot, tone it down. So W four is at max forty feet also. W three and W four are also at the height level suggested for E three.
So the only one, the only other district that has the forty-five-foot height are the two closest to Skilling's.
E two?
E two. And, 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 and have the, the forty-five-foot residential height that they, that we are placing at E one and W one.
Yeah.
Right, so forty-five, 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 but when we get up to E three, we're reducing the maximum residential height to forty, even though you point out that the buildings that are there now are forty-five feet.
No, it's allowed to be forty-five.
No, they aren't, they're, they're nowhere near that.
Well, then I would say to keep it at the forty, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
To, to bring it down to forty.
I really think the line is just current.
Bring it to forty.
Bring it.
You're, you're gonna down, downsize it.
Do we wanna do that?
That's what we're, well, I, I think we're giving them fifty in the mixed use as a, as an incentive.
This is a house of cards. Um, if it's forty-five now, I don't want to restrict opportunity. That's not the point of this.
Um, except that, you know, all of these are at forty-five now, W four and W three.
Right, except I'm looking at E three proposed forty feet for residential max. And I, and I'm asking, should that be forty-five also? Or do you prefer that it stay at forty with the concept of tapering down building height as we get towards the north end of the corridor?
And W four is cur, I mean, they're all zoned currently for three stories, so the forty-five feet is like, you really have ceilings or like.
Yeah.
So, I mean, currently it's.
It, it seems crazy, actually.
Forty-five feet, but three stories, so they were never gonna get there unless they do like.
Um, yeah, let's just, cause I'm seeing some other inconsistencies, so.
So at W three and W four, the proposal was also to downzone it a little bit. So currently, they are allowed three stories. Um, the, the proposed is two and a half.
For, yeah.
Which correlates to.
So that, that downzones it a little bit, or.
So, that, that downzones it a little bit, or, I, that's probably the wrong term for it. And we're, so do we want this to match that downzoning here, or do we want it to match this side, east side? It, it, they are really deep lots.
They are, I know, and so this is why we're doing what we're doing, because we really notice a difference in terms of the character of the experience of the east side and the west side, once we fix all the horrible traffic problems.
So this corner is separated by these guys with a, you know, big road, and it's different and characteristic because it's so much deeper, twice if not three times.
Deeper. So I would.
But it does, you know, a, a, um, but these residential zones.
That's exactly right.
I think those, I might be wrong, but I think they go up a hill, though.
Uh, mm, mm, only when you get to like the next street up.
No, I think that's.
It's okay.
It's cross.
And then, once you go past that development, then the, the, the land starts to rise.
Yeah.
What would be helpful to me would be if we could just focus on, let's focus on one column, then identify its closest relative and focus on that column, so we know that our rationale is carrying over. So for instance, on East 2, its closest relative would be East 1, so 45 and 45, 45 and 45. Um, did we decide to leave?
But they're, certainly, I mean, the point of the small zones is that they're, we're just trying to be granular.
Well, just E1 and E2 are, are fairly.
Yeah.
Well, they're not actually.
Are these, um, stories what we selected for the most part?
Yes.
They are, the stories are, just not the heights, are they?
The only changes that the Z-RAC suggested were, are in red.
Yep.
Oh, okay. All right, so we selected these.
Well, I just have to make sure I understand it, cause I wanna keep this rolling.
Stories, the heights don't match in all cases.
So in E2, three stories, 40, 45 feet, I'm looking at the PB proposed row. Three stories, 45 feet, and if it's a mixed use, four stories, 55 feet.
But that seems wrong, right, for, for, for height, that seems higher than it needs to be for the stories we're allowing.
Sorry, go back.
For, she's looking at E1.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm in E, I'm looking at E2, and I'm saying PB proposed, um, and we're saying, I'm looking at both sheets for stories and height. E2, PB proposed, residential, three stories, 40 feet. Mixed use, four stories, 50 feet. And then the Z-RAC had the same impression. Um, and so then, holding that in mind, you go up to E3, and with the philosophy that the buildings are starting to exhale a little bit, that you would have three stories, wait, E3. Three stories, 45 feet, three stories. This is where I was getting confused, cause it says three stories, 40 feet.
I think that that new development across from the park, where it was three stories and really tall, probably at 45 feet max, um, felt too big for a lot of the, um, neighbors, and so therefore, when we get up to E, W3, when it gets even.
Wait, we're talking east side right now.
But she's giving context for.
Yeah, I understand.
So, so, so then, to bring it down now would then help new development, and ha, maybe help neighboring sentiment.
Right.
We're allowing it to be tall, although we're allowing it to be 50 feet.
When mixed use, yeah.
When you have a mixed use.
If you're living behind it, it's still 50 feet.
E3 would stay at three stories and 40 feet, which is lower than E2, right, three stories and 45, and E3, if it's mixed use, would be four stories and 50 feet, as opposed to E2 where it's, E2, four stories and 55 feet. So there's a little bit more scale to the buildings in E2. Okay, so we're comfortable with that, I'm gonna put a check mark there, just so I don't.
Are you checking the height?
Yeah, I'm checking height and stories, like going back and forth, I think we've done East and West 1, and we've done East 2 and East 3, right? Um, I think that's what we've done, and then we get to.
Now, you're checking E3 as well for both of those?
Yeah, what we said, Nick, I'll repeat it, that if it was in E3, so go up to the map and picture that right-hand side where 955 is.
Yeah, I, I have it.
And it would be a maximum of three stories, E3, and 40 feet, and a maximum for mixed use of four stories and 50 feet.
Okay.
Oh, so you, oh, okay, I thought we were gonna discuss that, because it has a grade change, E3, that we would.
Oh, we put it to 55?
45 and 55. Is that what your understanding is, Carrie? I mean.
I think so, I mean, I think the, I'm looking at the map to see if we can get a sense of the grade there, the, um.
Yeah, I can't.
I know it's hilly back there, I just can't remember where they all shake out, and a bunch of that is nine, no, what, E3 is not 955, it's like, the Anka's the little tiny building.
Oh, E3 is way up, that's right, E2 is 955.
That cross street.
Yeah, Anka is up in 955, right.
The, three of those I think are pretty new, they're not gonna go anywhere.
Well, and yes, what this is not taking regard of is the likelihood of change, which is something that.
And the back does drop, right?
Behind where, behind.
All along the east side, there is great changes, like right here.
Like that's Wendell Street that goes down to that, like, turnabout.
This is Wendell.
It might be low because that was the Wilbur Loop, and the Wilbur Loop had to be level, it's the train track, so it goes down to the level of the old train track and then rises up the hill again.
And that whole, like this is sort of down on its own lot. So like four stories here is not gonna be, that's like a wacky topography.
So, and you're looking specifically at mixed use in E3 when you say that, mixed use in E2.
I think that whole area underneath that curved street is sort of set down. So four and a half stories, I think, would be even with the houses behind it, but I, I may have that wrong.
Think so.
We, I mean, this is not final, I would like to say.
I'm sorry, why?
I think that this tree, this tree, yes, goes upward, it goes up a hill, and this goes up and then comes down. I distinctly remember that.
So the point in the typography, the topography, is that if the building is sitting on lower land, it will impose less on the neighbors if it's a little bit taller.
Yes.
It's a four-story.
And vice versa, more so.
Correct. Right. But I mean, that's changing it on Z-RAC, sort of without consulting, but I.
We're gonna go back and forth, okay, I mean, none of this is final, it's sort of like.
I'm, I think that I'm not clear on what we're settling on.
I think that we are trying to look at E3 and keep it at 45 by right, and then mixed use.
By right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then mixed use at 55, similar to E2.
Similar to E2?
Because it's, it's distinctly different and characteristic than this side of before, even though it, it, but these residential areas, it is lower.
Okay.
Deeper.
Right, so let's just do that, we're gonna say E3 residential, 45, maximum height of 45 feet, mixed use maximum height of 55 feet, and on the stories chart, E3 residential maximum three stories, and in E3, stories for mixed use would be.
Four.
Four.
So it'd be the same for E2 and E3 in both cases?
So now, if we can shift our mental visualizing to the west, 2, 3, and 4, having already taken care of West 1, which does not, with the one exception, back up to residential, and so what we said about 2, 3, and 4 on the west side was that, um, we would not do anything higher than 45 feet, and we said that as you go up to 3 and 4, the maximum commercial height would go from 55 to 50. Not commercial, excuse me, mixed use, I mean to say mixed use.
So, by right, this is, these are all, no, 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 okay, by right, W2 is three stories. W3 and W4, two and a half.
Ah.
By right.
Okay.
Okay, and then when it's mixed use, if somebody puts in something on the ground floor, W2 becomes four. Can be four stories, and then W3 is just three and a half, and then W4 is also three and a half.
But Z-RAC wanted lower than that.
So W2, they wanted.
Two and a half and three and a half.
Two and a half and three and a half, so they wanted all of this to be two and a half, similar to all around single-family housing height.
Yeah, all the way up, the corridor.
Yep.
And so I can understand why that would be the case, and it would reinforce the, um, it, it's an opportunity at three and a half stories for a mixed-use building to still echo the character, but the height would be kept to 50.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yep.
So if I was to read the two charts together, starting with W2, which is right closest, just north of Clark, it would be maximum of three stories, 45 feet for residential in W2.
That's, that was our suggestion, but Z-RAC wants it two and a half, three and a half.
Oh, Z-RAC, oh, I see, right.
I'm inclined to take Z-RAC's suggestion on this, because I think we have decent neighborhood representation on the Z-RAC, and I would like to honor their opinion on that.
So in fact, all the way up, all three of those districts on the west side would all be a maximum height of 40, which is lower than what we have now.
Mm-hmm.
A maximum height for a mixed-use building of 50. A maximum stories for an all-residential building of two and a half.
Which is less than what we have now.
Less than what we're zoned for, not less than what we have.
Right.
So right now, one can build a three-story.
With a flat roof?
Yep.
Now, do we, so the rationale with the half-stories is that.
Just make it.
A, a half-story is.
Is not necessarily a pitch.
Of, 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 of slanted roof.
No, not, I mean, you could do a half-story, a flat roof, and then just cut it, cut it away.
Oh, I see, so.
How do you count a daylight basement? Is that a half-story? Like, if your basement's half-underground and half, that never counts as a whole thing.
No. Um, no, I remember what you're talking about, now the concept that if you have the, if you have the mass of the building, this is the street and this is the back of the lot, and the first part, visible to the street is stepped back, but at 50% of it goes like that.
It could be either that or front it at the street level, too, so that the backside gets a little bit of a, you know, um, diagonal.
So how?
So, I, I, I'm fine with that.
Fine with which?
Okay.
All, like, what Z-RAC is recommending, two and a half.
For, for 2, 3, and 4, W2, 3, and 4.
Yep.
We're gonna go with 2.5 stories and 3.5 stories in each case.
It's sort of all similar, could, could make it all one district now, it doesn't have, it doesn't have to be granular like we did it.
All right, so, you'll notice that Michael suggested applying a minimum height to keep district uniformity, and that would be.
A minimum height?
I know, a minimum height of 24 feet, so, um, that would be, if somebody was inclined, for instance, to make a one-and-a-half-story, like a ranch-style or a cape-style little house on that lot, and first of all, i- i- from an economic point of view, it would be exceedingly unlikely or impractical, unviable, but he's saying that a minimum building height would provide a continuity.
He doesn't want someone just building like a castle tire, like one story.
It's disincentivize, it disincentivize that, but we're also trying to disincentivize, or actually not allow single-family on Main Street.
That's right.
So this is similar in that idea, in that we don't want that low-density of use. If you're gonna change it, don't change it to even lower density.
Um, I'm trying to think of what we would exclude if we had it all on one floor, and there's probably not a lot large enough.
You mean uses?
I'm thinking of, like, yeah, is there anything that would be, that would like benefit from being, like, okay, we've already excluded these, but like dog kennels really don't need a second floor, so I'm trying to think, is there a use?
Well, you can put housing on top of it.
Castle tire, like, but you, you know, I'm just thinking through, is there any business that benefits from being single-story?
Not particularly.
Or, everyone can put an elevator.
If we say the minimum building height is 24 feet, and that's to our measurement protocols for building height, um, as we've defined it, um, it's actually a, a building that could be like actually 28 feet in actuality, because you go to the uniform of the height.
Yeah, just don't build a one-story building.
Yeah.
Anymore. I, I mean, I kind of.
Comfortable with this?
Yeah, I think so.
Think so.
Okay.
It's fine, I can't think of.
Okay, so let's say that, 24?
Now, do we wanna make the, uh, the heights uniform in the case of W2, since we made the stories uniform with W3 and W4?
Um, it, oh, I see, W2 is at 45, and, and the reason that we did that was because it's closer to the southern end of the higher-density end of the corridor, and also, cause it looks out over a park.
But we just said we're gonna take Z-RAC's recommendation of two and a half.
So they're, they're, they're bringing.
Oh, so that 45 is out?
Yeah, so let's.
Yes, correct.
So let's, let's make that 40, 50.
It is 40, 40, 50.
40, 50.
Yes, okay.
Same with stories.
So.
Same with stories.
That along with the minimum building height of 24 inches means that we actually set some planning board proposed dimensional requirements for that.
So for, hold on, go back to E1, though, I don't think we've, like, um.
Finish that part, since this is 65 feet right now, but maximum four and a half, it doesn't make sense to me, because that's a six.
I would always correct that to 55.
Yeah, I think that makes more sense.
And would that go for W1 also?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, there's a huge difference, and one of the things we have to be very careful about, I just remembered this. Height gives density, unless you, um, you know, it's that push-pull of open space to height and height to number of units.
Right.
And is it possible that in our thinking when we did this, we were knowing that E1 and W1, East and West 1, are, for the most part, within the 3A, and would the 3A zoning provide for 65? I, I don't know how we're doing that.
No, this is a 3A zoning.
55 seems high enough, particularly given 4.5, uh, stories.
I mean, we do.
I'm not saying we go higher than 65.
We have, I mean, we did set, we're gonna have to get density models for 3A, I mean, we're gonna have to sort of get, I, I think we're fine, because I think we have enough space between Park View and the condos, I think for density, we're okay.
Okay.
So I don't think we have to worry too much about that.
So if we lower.
Lower it to 55.
If we lower the maximum height for a special permit mixed-use building in E1 and West 1 from 65 to 55, you believe we'll still be able to make our density numbers?
I also don't think that we should, I think we should set it how we want it to be set, and if we have to make an accommodation later, I think that makes more sense.
We can visit that.
Just so you know, the voting that we did two meetings ago to finalize the boundaries of the Town Center 3A District, okay? After that, Taylor was gonna give us the final calculated compliance numbers, and I don't think he had a chance to do that before he went.
You mean for acreage?
Acreage and capacity.
I think we were fine for acreage, and I think the unit capacity, he, I.
I, I thought that he, I thought that he indicated that we were winners.
Yeah, I think.
I don't think he's worried enough to sort of push it forward before we had.
We'll see that, we'll see that in the weekend, um, okay.
But I, I see what you're saying, though, Sally, about the special permit to 65, because it would then allow it for, um, because it's by special permit, it wouldn't go through 3A, and so then, it, they could, they could design it such that there's more space.
Well, here's the thing, if we're gonna, if we're gonna say 65, we should say four and a half stories, because.
Yeah, we did, we do say that.
In E1.
Yep.
Four, oh, 65, four and a half, and West 1, 65.
If we say 65, we should say maximum, like, five or six.
What, stories?
Yes.
Yep, 65.
Yeah, I think.
So I think, I think four and a half and 55 makes sense, that, that's sort of a more.
Okay, so if we said 55 and four and a half, that's what you're saying, for the mixed use in East 1 and West 1?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so 55 and four and a half.
And, and the by right is 45.
And four and a half.
Check those boxes off.
Right.
For E1.
So I'm gonna say that with this conversation, we've completed two worksheets, and we have a lot more to do, but we're getting really warm up in this exercise.
All right.
Uh, wait, I have a question for W1?
Yes.
Did we change the stories, or are we leaving those stories?
The stories in W1.
Go back to three.
Go to.
Three and four and a half.
Three and four and a half, that's correct.
Similar to E1.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good, okay, in Taylor's packet, the next sheet is parking requirements, I'm gonna ask that you take that out.
Okay, Sally, sorry, sorry to bother you, so
After uses?
After uses, yes, oh, wait.
So we've checked off W two, W three, and W four in, in both sheets as well, haven't we?
Yes, and, and the stories and the height.
Right, okay.
And to turn our attention to page five, which is the table for floor area ratio. And I will confess that I find floor area ratio to incentivize lower density and bigger units.
What? Say that again, you find FAR to incentivize?
Lower number of units and bigger units per the, whatever the square footage is. Like we saw in Con- Converse.
So, so what are you proposing?
So, I'm proposing, well, not only am I not proposing something, I'm, I think I need to defer to others who understand FAR's impact.
Just refresh my memory as to the definite, the formula.
Floor area ratio, so you, if you have a half acre of land and you make a building, you're allowed half an acre square feet of, half an acre, basically, of
Right, so an acre is five thousand two hundred.
So you could, you could fill it with a pancake, or you, you make it into two stories, and now you have you filled up half of the land, but with a two-story building. Or if you wanna take, you know, you just continue that until you get the same FAR one is, is that. So it FAR one point two five, then increases it by a little bit, so like, if you wanna fill the entire lot, it's one and a quarter stories, basically.
Mm-hmm.
But then you just, you just take that building and
If you're saying entire lot to the setbacks.
No, no, yeah, no, no, it's not to the setbacks.
Oh.
And so I'm saying a one acre to one acre, say, or half acre, half acre.
So what does it mean to have
So, but then if you have the setbacks, then you have to push your building up.
Let's do it by square feet, so if you have a ten thousand square foot lot, and you wanna put a twenty thousand square foot
That's a two, that's a two point O FAR.
You have a ten thousand square foot lot, and you wanna put a seventy-five hundred square foot building with, with all floors, um, that would be a one point five.
I'm not doing my math fast enough, but, oh, yes, okay. Yes, so, so, so currently, it's one point O. So like, say, ten Converse with all the setbacks that it takes, or in all, whatever, it can make a, it can make a building. By right, FAR one point zero, and they were asking for whatever it was that they were asking for.
Well, they had an incentive in the FAR.
So, I won't, I won't, I won't do that, but like, but so then, what they are trying to or what Michael Wang is suggesting is that we increase the FAR for these districts, so it incentivizes a little bit more buildings.
Larger buildings.
More investment, because you're allowed to
So, so a high FAR is for a taller building, I mean, it doesn't have to
More density.
But if you built the Empire State Building, that would have a very, very high FAR.
More building, yeah, it's more building mass.
Right.
Yeah, relative, yeah, it's, it's, it's all these inter, interrelated factors
Yeah.
About number of floors, height of building, and FAR, and, and if you have really high building, but a fairly limited number of floors, you're encouraging high ceilings, for example.
So what's constraining what, is the, is the, is the height constraining the FAR, or the other way around? I mean
Well, also, housing is a very particular dimension, you cannot build like a very deep building, because you have to get sunshine into it, so it's, it's basically like a forty-foot, if you wanna do a double corridor, like two
Envelope.
Whatever, it's a very particular thing, and adding parking then adds a whole another constraint of dimensions. But no, it, it does, because it, the building then has to sort of be separated by structurally to allow the cars to fit in just so. Um, so tho- those are the constraints, um, so, you know, building fully to the lot is not good for housing. It's, you need, you need basically like a rectangle, or like a U or an L or something like that.
Right, it's like what the old four-square houses
You need as much, um, surface area as possible.
So going back to, the PB suggested, and I'm assuming that FAR, we didn't even discuss it with Z-Rack, I don't think, cause it was a
Yeah.
Drive meeting, it was a complex topic. So, but what Michael is proposing is that across all these sub-districts, um, that we allow one quarter more
Mm-hmm.
Of FAR
By right.
For residential, by right.
Mm-hmm.
And a half more for mixed use.
Yeah, so, you know, if you had setbacks, and you have a one point two five, but you had a small lot, I mean, the, the setbacks and, would probably be determining factor, cause you have a height limit at two and a half or something, you can't build you know, a lot of building if you had all those constraints already. Um, so, you know, you, you max out at like point seven five or something, but that's, that's what you max out at, that's it.
I think
So how material are these numbers? I mean, sort of like, it seems like, like, push, he is encouraging us to push it to one point two five just because it would, it doesn't, it just seems like our numbers are small enough that like
That there's, there are constraints, you already come across constraints already? Well, that's the thing, like, there, there, it's to incentivize, it's to, like, one of the main things that we wanna do for Main Street is to incentivize, you know, investment.
Yeah.
And, and when things aren't generous enough, people aren't gonna put money in it, cause there's too much risk, or it's just too, too tight. Um, so this gives you a little bit more space, kinda like the minimum parking area, or parking spots, right? Like, you, you give a minimum so that they can figure out whatever they need to figure out for
So does this impact size of unit, size of bedroom, none of that, it just impacts how much of the building is housed?
Yeah.
So having walked all through this, I think I'm comfortable with what Michael Wang is proposing for FAR.
I'm, I don't, I don't, I mean, I trust him more than my little time with it.
We're gonna keep it rolling, cause we get must, and we're gonna say that this is okay, and this will be part of our recommendation to
I think, I think that will be important to see some modeling around those, so if you could give us one visual slide, it would be sort of like, if you do it like this, it's this, and if you do it like this, it's that. I think that's the one visual slide.
So Nancy, as long as we capture the minutes, that we want Michael Wang to help us visualize what the FAR of one point five across the entire multi-use district looks like. Um, I mean, it, it also is relative to the development standards for each of the sub-districts, which is our big, you know, claim to virtue that we're doing this context-sensitive zoning, right? So, we get to the page five of Taylor's handout, the, and it's actually, um Oh, yeah. I think that five and six are meant to be read side by side again, because what he has proposed is Michael's suggestions, these are the ones that are highlighted in yellow, and the page seven document is blank for us to run it.
Oh, gosh.
We just, we just read over it on the other ones.
But he's, he's saying no change is necessary. Oh, no, 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 no.
Let's look at these, and this is an verbal exam, so do you think it's good to go horizontally across, or do you think it's good to go vertically down, or it's doing
I think horizontally.
Horizontally, okay.
What, so, so where's the current and
Okay.
And proposed?
So, so what you have right here, it, the first column is just for reference, what is the CBD regulation, or zoning code? And then in CBD, PUD two, it's, it's documented, okay? But the GBD two and three is the existing North Main Street values for, and this chart covers minimum lot area, minimum frontage, minimum front, side, and rear setbacks, um, minimum side yard when you're changing a use when you're abutting a different use, right? And then percent of open area and the maximum building footprint, okay? So, we're starting with top four, which is how much along the street, minimum frontage, the minimum front setback, minimum side setback, and then a rear setback, and you'll notice that some of them say zero to fifteen. A setback of zero means that a building is built to the front lot line and creates the street line. Which is something that happens in our CBD. And so, going to the goal that the, the North Main Street continues the character and vitality of the CBD, that is an argument for, for meeting as low as zero. And then the argument for permitting as much as fifteen is depending on the use, maybe you want open space there.
Okay.
So, going across, again, we'll start with E one and W one.
You're looking at minimum front setback right now.
I'm sorry, say again?
Yeah.
Looking at
Looking at front setback.
Okay, so in CBD is zero to ten. Um
I think that's appropriate.
PUD zero to ten, GBD two, which is, which covers actually a lot of our
It covers all, yeah, yeah, a lot.
It, it's, right now, currently, it's ten minimum, so it's, there's a little bit more space, and then a fifteen max, so it's a really small, um, window where you could do it.
Well, the, the very big difference here is that in GBD two, um, the minimum front setback is ten feet. Minimum means they have to be that or more.
Right.
And that, in the context of creating the rhythm of a corridor and the human experience, in continuing the street line, is a way of continuing the energy and vitality of the neighborhood.
In the neighborhood, I will die on this hill, we need a couple of feet of plantings in front of the buildings.
Well, I mean, if you see the most like vital parts of our town, or any sort of very vital downtown, a, a lot of it happens at the, between, between the sidewalk and the street, right, which is town on land, basically.
Well, so think about, um, 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 Cafe Nero.
Yeah.
They, I don't know if they have a permit or not, but they have a couple of chairs out there just to wait for a friend.
Right.
Right, um, as opposed to Starbucks
Right.
Had tables along the building.
So this allows you to do that, and I remember, um, so it's from zero to fifty, for, actually, multi-use, we're talking about multi-use right now, so zero to ten.
Yep.
Um, you can allow sort of a cafe space, just a little setback of ten feet or so, to allow for something like that.
I forgot, I have a question, does Michael want us to pick a number between zero?
No.
No, that the zoning would allow for anything between.
The developer would be able to choose anywhere from zero to ten.
So, right.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So say the developer wants to come in and do a really nice building and attract a, a really nice restaurant.
And they wanna have outdoor dining.
I'd die on this hill, like a little strip of grass.
Right, so they can choose to do that.
They can choose to do that, I'm just saying the feel between this, where it's cement to cement.
Hmm.
And for a neighbor, downtown, it's perfect, absolutely perfect, it should be an urban feel, if you add something, it should be an urban element, but once you get to residential
So you would rather it be like
W two, uh, up.
You would say three to ten, is what you're saying, the ma- the
I, yeah, it can be three, I mean, it doesn't have to be, I don't know what the standard, you know, sort of like little strip of grass.
So here's the, here's the push-pull of it all, which I keep saying, I hope people know what I mean when I say that. If you say three to fifteen, the first three feet of that property off the sidewalk is not to be developed. And that means that they're gonna have to get less out of their building or push it taller.
I know, I know.
And when we're trying to encourage housing and encourage, um, housing.
Yeah, but we're also creating a streetscape, and we're creating a feel walking into the building, and we're creating neighborhood character, and we shouldn't just
If E one and West one
And like, we could slide it like twelve, three in the front twelve, you know, like, we can give them the same
I wonder if Cafe Nero is actually on town land, would they do that, though? You know what I mean, it's, I think
You mean, are we talking about the tables? I'm not talking about the tables, I'm talking like mid-February, like, you know, you have a whatever, you have like an office building, you know, you have like a pediatrician or whatever, they're not gonna put tables out, I mean
Well, this is where we get to uses. Um, and if we have a range, it means that somebody can come in with use A or use B, and use A is really better with a very small front setback.
And it's not like I get they could just throw down some gravel, that's not great, but
So you're just concerned about green space?
I'm just concerned about the, the feel as you go down, but do we feel like we're in the middle of an urban setting, or does it start to feel like you're in a residential?
Would that translate into a wider walkway, maybe, or
Well, we're working with a very limited public realm, the building face to building face going up North Main Street is fairly narrow compared to, um, something like Mass Ave, for instance.
Right, right, which has a wide sidewalk.
Parking and bike and travel and travel, travel and bus and parking and bike, and it's just, it's a big street, this is small.
This is fairly big, though, it's like not well-defined and used, um, it was what I, I thought Michael was trying to prove to us, is that when we can make it more distinct, you know, storefront, sidewalk, um, little flex space with benches or whatever, um, and then str- bike, you know, road.
I'm happy to die alone, but I will die
Okay, alright, alright.
So, so the rationale for zero
Trying to figure out if we need, do we, do we need a wider sidewalk up there?
You're putting like four-story buildings
That, that is a town-determined issue.
No, but if we, if we, if we put the three feet, then, then it would
It's still private land.
Right.
Right, I think if somebody wants to put something in
Yeah.
That is setback up to fifteen feet, and they can make the numbers work, and the, and it has the market appeal that drives the numbers, they're gonna do it, set it back fifteen feet, because it's lovely.
Yeah.
Right, there's benches, there's a little fountain.
Right.
But we're doing setbacks.
So are we doing the minimum front setback as is shown here, which is across all the districts, it would be zero to fifteen?
A little bit more generous for, for residential, cause you can have a little bit more like softness.
And if it's a mixed use, it would be zero to ten, and that's where
I would agree with that.
I wish we could have more consensus, but, uh, I, cause I, I don't know what the answer is, uh, regarding the, the minimum setback.
Can you visualize what we're talking about?
Uh, I, I guess, I'm visualizing a very narrow sidewalk.
This is sort of what I'm thinking, this is like, I like
See, this, the sidewalk
And now every time I drive around town, I'm like, oh, it's
You're gonna crash the car.
Like, that's zero, right, so you go to the sidewalk, and then that's like a couple of feet of
Yeah, that's like, that, that looks like about a four-foot setback there, yeah. So, when we say zero to four, we mean that if you're gonna do a street front building, right? Um, you're defining that edge, and you're saying that you're in this corridor. Think about, um, walking along a sidewalk where there's not even a sidewalk, it's just one big open curb type and a huge concrete lot.
Right.
There's a missing street front.
Sure.
Right, so this is developing a street front that defines the corridor.
Right, it pushes the buildings towards the street a lot more than it does now on Main Street, and I, I would agree with that.
And I, and I'm not against that, because I want the buffer from the neighborhood, I'm not asking for like a ten-foot
Well, what I really hear about
So, so you'd like it to be three to fifteen?
I, I just don't see that as an industry standard with that kind of
Uh, like, I'm happy to be wrong about it.
Well, here's
Voice that like fought for a little green space.
I am avid about rear setback, because that's
I think that's important.
To the alternate, to the other views.
Moves the parking to the back.
And if, and if we erode the front
Right, I, I agree with that argument, Sally.
Pressure on the back.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
I know, I know, I know.
Yep, so, so we could say, and again, the side setbacks, um, are ten and zero, but you should understand that we also have in our zoning code that if a use change occurs on two abutting properties, not a use change, but one use and then a different use, um, we do talk about increasing the setback.
Um
That's one, that's in the table of dimensions for the town, if we're doing a separate table of dimensions for MU one, we need to specify that.
Well, if you wanna talk about rear setback, he has it at twenty and twenty for both uses, residential and multi-use. And I think the twenty is, is for that purpose, it's for the parking behind, because you need a lane wide enough
Right.
It's, it's, it's one head-on parking place plus a travel out, is, that's how it works.
I mean, with, and that increases the act, what we have right now is just fifteen, and so with that kind of increase in setback in the rear, I would, I would hopefully have a zero, so that they can be flexible about where that building
Yes, and it, there's also buffering, um, plantings, um, and walls where it's needed, and it's specified in the development standards that are in draft right now. Um, so we're walking down, and you'll see on the chart, uh, that that defines the setbacks across seven sub-districts. So looking at it holistically, is it making sense to us, as we're so immersed in this?
Yes, for the front and this rear, that makes sense to me.
And the side.
Oh, the side too, so the side is, um, for residential is ten, and then mixed use zero, that's intense.
I think that makes, that makes sense, though.
Zero, but if, if, um, say you did an all residential Zero, but if, if um, say you did a all residential property on one set of parcels immediately adjacent to a mixed-use property um, on another set of parcels immediately next to it, would you have to? Oh, no, the, the ten-foot setback for residential would pick it up.
I kinda think he knows what he's doing, you're definitely incentivizing mix, it seems like you're incentivizing mixed use to me.
Yeah.
That's what we're trying to do.
Or incentivizing mixed use the whole length, so this could, or this could end up being wall-to-wall store, like.
Well, I kinda like the comic store block, right?
Right, right, exactly.
Back to back, you wanna back to that kind of rhythm.
That's intense, I will take, I will agree with a second eachings word, use of the word.
Yes, but is it a good intense, like we want that kind of intensity, that kind of like rhythm of, yeah, you wanna keep going.
All zones all the way up, where like arguably it becomes.
Well, so when we get into.
It's hard to get it to do.
Well, mixed use, the reason that we are incentivizing mixed use is because it's been difficult for developers creating multi-story houses on North Main Street to fill the first floor with commercial. And they would have been able to fill it readily with residential, because there's such a demand.
I mean, if there's any sort of fire hazard stuff too, that would sort of trumpet in, in that, you would have to have a kind of alley or something like that too.
There has to be somewhere to access it, this is a dumb question, side setbacks are the same on both sides, there's no way to split it.
Mm-hmm.
So if we, is, what's the lowest industry standard you'd ever do there, ten?
Well, right now for our residential, it's fifteen, for, for some, for some, and then for the denser neighborhoods, I think it's less.
I know, I have fifteen, I'm in ten thousand square foot lot. And, and when you get up to W, to the west side, and there's twenty thousand square foot lots, it might even be more than.
Oh, yeah, but, no, for the smaller lots, sixty-five hundred, I think it's less than that.
Yes, less, right, um, so, okay, I don't wanna lose our thread here.
And for garages, it's five, so it's tight, yeah.
Five, yes, you're right, it is five, um.
So the side, um.
The side is picked up okay too, right?
I, 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 yeah.
Cause what we get down to as the next discussion point, holding all that in our heads, clear as a bell, um, is the minimum open area. And you'll see that in the rate, the zoning for the center business district, they're asking for a ten percent minimum open area. So if you had.
E one and W one, which is uh.
Which is the same as what we're doing for East one and West one, is ten percent. In, currently in the zoning regulations for GBD two and three, there's a sixty percent minimum open area requirement, and I looked up the definition of open area is any space not occupied by a structure, so it can be pervious or impervious.
For a lot.
It's not occupied by a structure.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so, right now, the GBD two and three require sixty percent open space. That might be functioning as a disincentive to develop.
Yeah, all that, all that parking spot, parking blocks.
Let's look at what happens with fifty percent.
Yeah.
So he's tweaking it a little bit.
That's right.
Yeah.
To incentivize more investment in North Main Street.
I mean, open space of fifty percent is still quite a lot.
Well, okay, now let's do our FAR, cause remember the setbacks are within the open space, right?
Yeah.
Um, and um, any walkways and.
So if you had a ten thousand square foot lot, you would have to have five thousand, you can only cover like five thousand.
Five thousand square feet, um, but you could do four stories.
Right.
Depending on, or three stories, or two and a half, but it multiplies by that.
Right, which would be more conducive to residential, which requires light, because it would be taller and thinner.
Mm, mm-hmm.
So we might be okay with this, with the minimum open area, as Michael Wang has suggested, okay, is that true?
I think so, E one and W one for ten though?
Yeah.
E one and, and W one for ten, yes.
Cause PUD two is a ten to begin with, isn't, isn't that one of, one of those?
Does anyone know the open space for the office building, if they build the tall one on, okay?
Oh, no.
That's the residential.
As of right for, that would be, um, that must have been a sixty percent then.
You're talking about the one.
I, I, I don't think that's, that's what I'm asking.
You're asking if that building was built to a sixty percent open space?
Yeah.
Um.
It's a, it's newer.
It doesn't feel like it, but I can't say.
Actually, I guess it could be a deep lot.
Takeout from the plans, I don't know.
You, you weren't on the board when that one came through, I don't know how old it is, I know it's.
It's, it's new, it's controversial, I, I listen.
I'm so young, it was before my time.
You're just, your value makes it feel like your rates run deep on here.
Running, keeping mo- I'm not even looking at the clock, that's just, maximum building footprint, um, you'll see that with E one and W one, and also E two, he said that if you were to do aggregation of lots, okay, cause some of these lots aren't even that big. But if you were to aggregate lots for the purpose of creating a large building, the largest you could build in those three sub-districts.
It's a really big footprint.
Is a twenty-five thousand square foot print.
Yeah.
And he's saying that for, we are saying, for E, oh, it's cut off, E three and the three west side sub-districts, that we would keep it at a ten thousand square foot building. Which would be basically two giant five thousand square foot houses, so you're looking at, I mean, it's a pretty, it's, it's a big building, but it would be multifamily.
E three, one of the buildings is already.
Um, I don't know how to judge this one.
No, I'm, I'm just looking, we're, we're gonna want some time on the uh, uses.
I know, we're getting there, we're really close, we're getting, we're actually, we're getting to uses after this one discussion about maximum building footprint. Do you want to leave it as it is as we go into the final zoning with legal?
I mean, I don't know how to judge it right now, I.
So it's just too okay, so I have on page six of Taylor's sheet, which we didn't use page seven, which was a worksheet.
Right, we just.
That everything that's on page six is, is acceptable to us of this structure?
It seems so, right, yep.
So we're gonna move on to uses now, and what I wanna say about the uses thing is, um, that every use that's in here, um, well, these uses are categorized differently than the uses in our current uses table, and I was getting in a mental tangle about that, okay? Because, I, and I went through actually, and I tried to say, alright, artisanal studios, that's a category four, but it would need to be added, makerspace is a category two, but it would need to be added. Um, so I started to go through for every one of the uses that's on Taylor's sheet and see where they lined up with our existing use table.
So this is your, this is you producing it, or is this Taylor?
This is everything, everything, and, I, Taylor or Griffin, but then I took it and I made myself crazy, writing notes all over it. Um, Diab came to my rescue, the rescue, our rescue, and said, no, no, we can make a use table for the mixed-use portion of town, that district, that is different from these tables for other districts. So if you go into the zoning code, you would just take out GBD two and three, and where it says MU one, it would say C section X of the zoning bylaw, just like it does for the CBD, it says C at section seven point three.
Okay.
Okay, and so then you would go to the use table for MU one, and we would create it. And we would include things that are missing that we wanna see, we would review the prohibitions that are in the existing zoning, and make sure that if we want to include them, we do. Um, and um, we would categorize them in some logical way that makes sense to the world. And we have definitions for anything that's missing, so do we wanna try to work down this sheet with those things in mind?
Well, we did that last time.
We kinda did, I, I just, just as, on the, on page nine.
Look at what we've got here, make sure it reflects our thoughts.
I don't, I don't understand why we're, we're saying no to grocery.
Okay, let's go back, let's do it line by line, so we're saying that across the entire corridor, we have to define what an artisanal studio is. Um, so I'm gonna put a D E F next to this, that means that's one that we need a definition for. But we're saying across the entire corridor, if someone wants to create an artisanal studio, they could.
It's hard to know without definitions.
Are we gonna do this for every single piece, so they're like, there's a hundred lines.
Let me ask you, this is.
Who has concerns about any of them, Nick has questions about.
I just, I just had a question on page nine about the grocery not being allowed in certain.
I think food is one we need to revisit, so.
Okay, and where do I see grocery on, oh, I see, it's in the second, on the retail.
I just, I just think we should allow it across the board, because if it's too small for a grocery store, they won't put one in. If they wanna put one in, I think they should be allowed to have it.
Convenience store in here, yes, on the bottom of page eight. So by, again, we have to define, what is a convenience store compared to a grocery store, is it a square footage thing?
Um, I've, I've seen a lot of small grocery stores, when I was in New York.
And I've certainly never seen a convenience store that was as big as like a market basket.
Right.
So.
Alright, so we have about sixty minutes?
I know.
Or no, fifty minutes.
We're gonna get through this uses table here very, very quickly, because we're gonna scan it and identify things that don't make sense. Let's look at E one and West one, and make sure that any differences between E one and West one and the other districts make sense to us. So right now, everything in the first grade block is permitted, except art exhibition, which I don't even know what that means.
A special permit.
I think that's why it's a special permit, we would like to know what that means.
So then we're gonna put a definition there too, okay, so now we go to the second block, which is automotive, and we're saying that any new automotive uses as listed here, motor vehicle repair, sales, rental, et cetera, would all be by special permit.
Do we wanna say no to anything?
I, I think it makes, I think it makes sense to do it by special permit, because one of the things we need to do is balance the automotive services across town.
That is exactly right.
I don't know if we need to box anything out, we just.
And then the food and beverage, um, I think is huge, and this is where I think the existing zoning for GBD two and three have been sadly restrictive, especially when you get up to what we're now calling W three and four.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so right now, and I don't know why catering service was done as a special permit, a catering service is like a takeout place, isn't it?
We had this conversation last time.
And it was, is it more truck intensive or something?
It's a kitchen without a dining room.
As opposed to takeout?
Up to five thousand square feet, okay, so small is okay, over five thousand square feet, or over, or large is by special permit, is what we thought, we talked about.
So then on the first line of this food and beverage section of this table, we would say catering service or any of these food uses, up to five thousand is permitted, over five thousand would be special permit, except fast food would be special permit all the way across.
Has that been prohibited there before?
What, fast food?
Any of the food, I'm thinking about the residents who have suddenly been abutting of restaurants, there are, like, I'm thinking they're mostly on the east side.
It, this is a really important point that you raised, let me just get to my zoning bylaw, so, um, and this is chapter.
There are, there are convenience stores.
There's a, a.
Okay, so it's section three.
Retail block on the west side, up by Cross Street.
Does it have?
So the, the table of uses, um, eating.
Uh, no, I can't.
No, that's okay, I'll just tell you that the, the prohibited uses currently in GBD two and three are as follows. You cannot convert a single family, and there's this law.
But what's the food stuff?
You cannot build an apartment house, you cannot do cluster housing or multiple, multi-use development. You cannot, um, do a country club, or a predominantly outdoor recreational use. You cannot have a hospital, an orphanage, a sanitarium, or a cemetery. And you cannot have a means of waste disposal facility, for which I am extremely grateful. Um, and, uh, you cannot have a television studio, I mean, this is where I kinda feel funny about these. You cannot have a drive-in, drive-up, drive-through restaurant in our current zoning on GBD two and three, okay?
So that's one I think we should think, so when we, so I think what we boiled down to for fast food is that we were making sure it wasn't gonna be drive-through.
Car-centric.
We were trying to parse, you know, what's a be good, what's a, you know, what counts as a takeout.
Right, takeout is pedestrian-centric.
So do we want a special permit?
We also said, just, we should be really quick with this, we also said in GBD two and three that you cannot do a motor vehicle fuel facility, um, a sales or repair garage for cars, um, sales of cars, this is all these uses, and you cannot have a commercial parking lot or parking garage in GBD two or three. And then there's industrial uses are not permitted, except you could do a lab, okay, cause I think we have one. And then a, all accessory uses are forbidden, except for family daycare, small and large would be by special permit. And then you get into delis, lunch counters, soda fountains is permitted in GBD two, but not three.
Yeah, GBD three doesn't want to have fast food either.
Right, so these are the kinds of decisions that we have an opportunity to validate or change.
I think we're adding, we're adding food and beverage across the board in this new scenario.
Alright, let's, now let's go back to this then.
Catering service, restaurant, catering service is a special permit, that's fine.
Well, this is, when we're each-ing.
Talk about small versus large, so small is okay, large.
Large, and, and a small up to five thousand square feet is okay.
Or whatever it is.
Over five thousand square feet, you need a special permit, it would be like a big commercial.
So to next point, we don't turn down a ton of special permits, and I think the neighborhood would get, I'm thinking of the west, like, two, three, four.
Right, we don't turn down a ton of them.
I think the neighborhood would be excited about it, but I think a special permit would allow them to weigh in.
And a special permit.
For any restaurant food establishment.
Right.
Just because you're inviting like food waste essentially, I mean, that's a different.
But we're saying yes for all restaurants.
Is it open late, is it, you know, I think they would have questions about what's going in next door to there.
Okay, so the other thing is that, um, and this is, Diab has reminded me, us, that regulations governing the sub-districts of MU one can be promulgated by the planning board, just like we promulgated regulations for the CBD, okay?
I, I think that neighborhood wants cafe, like coffee shops, like I think they want that, but I just.
What if illegal seafood went in there, I mean, a big thing like that.
We would have wanted them to weigh in on it, they would have wanted to say.
When you say, say that some of these small cafes and, um, uh, restaurants, they're, they're the ones that sort of determine a, a lot of investment in, in a place, I don't think you want to restrict them to the special permit.
But the special permit doesn't necessarily get turned down that frequently.
I understand that, but there's, there's a lot more paths, and they already have a bunch of stuff that they need to go through, the health department and.
There is some process in Winchester.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know.
That's why we're trying to say, as much uses as, as possible.
Yeah, you want an E two, uh, sorry, you want a W one, yes.
Is yes, um.
So you want W one, E two and E three, I think are all very used to having lots of food, I just don't think W, at least, I gotta look.
Wait, E, go back to the.
So three and four, so two, three and four, I don't think.
We're gonna hold it up, cause it takes forever to go up.
Be because of the, yeah, I just, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there, I'm just saying, I understand it's a barrier, but I don't know what else would go down, you know, do they want?
Well, the only thing I would say about this bottom food and beverage table is for catering service, the first line, we would say up to five thousand square feet is a yes, and anything over five thousand square feet is a special permit, and then when you go to restaurant.
Is yes.
That, that, that could be a yes, but we could say the same thing on up to five thousand.
Yeah, so it's not an Applebee's or something.
So up to five thousand would be a yes, and over five thousand would be a special permit?
Okay.
Is that what we're saying?
Okay.
Okay?
And I think those larger establishments are probably used to a bunch of tape, red tape, so.
So I'm gonna say, yes, up to five K, SP over five K, and that is going on the restaurant one, okay? And then the fast food, we're saying special permit, and that correlates to this description that I read in our other zoning table, and then takeout is a yes, and convenience store, as long as we define it as less than a certain, like, five thousand square feet, right? I mean, it seems like a big convenience store.
At some point, it's inconvenient, walking through a Walmart takes forever.
It's not convenient at all, um, this is what I was saying, I've never been in a convenience store that's as big as a market basket. Um, so, a- again, I don't know if we wanna introduce any, um, uh, dimensional uh, qualifications on convenience store.
I, I think it's self-limiting.
Just leave it yes, okay, okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay, each-ing?
I think so, yep.
Okay, so what happens then is we go to page nine, and we get the rest of the food and beverage uses, which for a cafe bakery, coffee shop is yes across the board, and then we get to the liquor-related uses, and they all end up with special permit.
That sounds fair, I mean, it, because we might wanna. That sounds fair, I mean, because we might wanna allow the local residents to weigh in in those cases.
I love hearing drunks at two A M. No, on T zone.
I mean, you know, it might create vibrancy.
Is that what that's called? I gotta quote you on that, Nick. Um, what do we think about all these special permits for beer tavern, brewery, distillery, and liquor store?
I'm I don't know how it's done typically, but.
Well, none of them happens without a permit, a liquor permit from the select board, and those are limited.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Although.
So then you add a special permit to that?
Yes, I mean, if we're allowing.
Cause then you would wanna like identify a place where you could have that and then get that liquor license, right?
And it's not like people are drinking their liquor, I mean, maybe a tasting.
So then. You're you're like.
See, to me, I would make them all yes, knowing that that liquor sales in this town is closely managed by our select board.
Right, right. Right, I just don't wanna add, it just seems like it would be very hard to start a restaurant if you didn't know.
Adding it to the places that will accumulate food waste and alcohol.
So a restaurant might wanna suit alcohol, I'm not sure.
I don't think you'd do it for breweries, distilleries, or liquor stores. Bars and taverns.
I would take out brewery and distillery frankly, but.
Really, those are those are like, they really encourage.
No, those are fun.
No, those are the cool things.
Those those are like the mixture things.
Oh, you know why I said that? Cause I don't drink beer. I'm just too, I'm too.
You don't wanna see the Verizon building converted to a huge.
Well, it'd be fun.
I would love to see that, just as an example.
Yeah.
Um.
So do you wanna say yeses?
I I think so, if it's controlled in another way.
Yeah, I would be a special permit for bar and tavern though, I think that should be.
But that is already have, like, depends on a liquor license.
What if you, what if you wanna open up a, uh, another, uh, what's the restaurant, Black Horse Tavern?
That's a restaurant.
Is that a restaurant that can sell, is that, that's, is that?
That's a bar tavern. A bar tavern without a liquor license.
I'm saying those would be great, I'm just saying.
Yes.
Right, so, um, I mean, you're really limiting.
And a restaurant without a liquor license.
We wanna make sure we're on sound control, we're on traffic control.
Yeah, those are all, those would all be in play. Those would all be in play. It's it's whether or not you can even identify a place on GBD three to, you know.
Is it across the street from creative corner and?
Well, it's a different times timeframe that those things happen.
The only thing I have a question about brewery, distillery is, that's actually almost like a light manufacturing use, but they make them really fun now. You can go in and sit with the big color tables and all of that.
They're very fun.
So we're saying we're gonna, we wanna switch the booze to yes, is that essentially what we're getting?
It seems like that, like, you know, it then if you don't get the liquor license, then it becomes a restaurant, right? Like, it's or that doesn't serve booze. I I don't know, cause like I I would hate to have a business person have an idea and then not be able to identify the place and then get the liquor license and have these two things in the air and and not be able to do anything about it.
So, in our notes to our table of uses, it could say that the planning board does not confer liquor licenses. Final liquor permits come from our select board. Right, Michael? Right, we can say that.
I mean, it's already, yes, sure.
It doesn't matter what we say, they have to do it, so.
Okay, it's amazing what people don't do if you don't remind them. But at any rate, so we're gonna change this entire box at the top of page nine to all yeses.
Including the liquor store?
Including liquor store, brewery, distillery, and bar tavern.
I think so, I mean, if they can't, they they have another whole system that they need to go through, we don't wanna add more limits to them.
I'm comfortable with it, and I hope that it doesn't become a flashpoint. I don't think it will.
Yeah, okay, well, if so, then.
And if it does, we can put a footnote in our table of uses.
Add marijuana to it.
So I don't know what home improvement sales mean.
Add marijuana to it.
And we're moving fast down, page nine, second block, home improvement, grocery, flea market, and other retail and sales. I don't understand what home improvement is.
Oh, it's like Fels Hardware, wouldn't it be?
Yeah.
Hardware or like.
Hard restore.
It's a hardware store.
Hard arguably architect, no, that's just an office. There there, you could have, you could have, you're selling.
Curtains, I mean, somebody, winter treatments, I don't know why that would be.
Bespoke kitchens, I guess that's.
Yes, architect, just professional services.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think maybe not something as big as Home Depot, but yes, like Ace Hardware would be.
Ace Hardware.
So they're saying.
Tile store.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so those would all be by special permit?
No, I think it would be yes.
Uh.
I think.
Okay, so I'm trying to think, like, what do we wanna vet before we just sort of send it through?
Right, so like noise ordinances and things.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's a retail function.
I think that would be fine.
It's a yes in this chart, and then we have, um, in the medical categories, we've got only a yes.
Can we just make grocery yes where it says no?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, 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 thank you, Nick, thank you for that. Right now, it says no for, the headers aren't here. Oh, is it there?
Is it a no where Stop and Shop is?
Um, grocery says no for E three.
I don't see the distinction, really, I mean.
Oh, it's just, it's just the smaller districts.
Right, but I mean.
No, E three, way up, so.
I mean, if we're allowing, uh, all the restaurants.
Oh, so we're keeping them out of the the E three and the high Ws for that reason, that we didn't want a big grocery store up there. But I wanna tell you, food deserts are a real thing, and fifteen minute neighborhoods are great for them.
Yeah, well.
Right, fifteen minute neighborhoods.
E two, E one would be great, I mean, if Stop and Shop decides to make a smaller one of themselves into E two or something, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind that. And then build housing in that lot.
Or or at least make it special permit.
But what about E three and the Ws, the higher Ws, what do you think?
Um, I mean, like a bodega, is that a grocery store? Not really, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Be like a convenience.
If they wanna sell groceries, I think yes.
So I'm gonna say yes.
A bodega, yeah.
Yeah, what would the olive oil store have counted as?
Right.
Retail?
Detail.
And and this would be very constant.
Fresh fruit, I always think that fresh fruit or something.
So are you are you changing all the noes to yes?
Well, and I'm changing the home improvement sales to a yes too. So the second block of uses, there's four of them on page nine, would all be yeses across all sub-districts. And when we get to the medical one, it's quite a patchwork quilt. Um, the ones that are yeses all the way across are dental offices and veterinary offices, and my note to myself was veterinary without overnight boarding.
A lot of vets have overnight boarding, but yeah.
Well, okay.
I'm I'm with you, I'm just saying that one.
Well, then then perhaps the clarifying comment is, um, with no outdoor overnight boarding.
I don't know.
Like, I took our, remember our Charlie who died? He had to spend the night several times at the vet.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, they have animals overnight a lot, so what's.
Right, so I don't wanna say that then, I wanna say no outdoor, um, day or overnight.
We have a vet there now, right? We have a small one, like, way up in W four.
Yeah, this is.
But we're talking about the center, I mean, we're talking about the new multi-use district along North Main.
Yep.
And do we wanna see anywhere in there an animal use with outdoor day or overnight?
Okay, no outdoor boarding.
No outdoor day or overnight boarding.
I mean, okay.
It's like, like, a lot of these doggy daycare places, they have a giant outdoor yard, and the dogs run around and bark.
Yeah.
I mean, they would never, that would be such an expensive venture on North Main to set up.
Yeah.
So no day or overnight boarding, okay? So, and then, does that mean that the urgent care and the hospital would be a special permit? And the emergency care, I don't know what emergency.
I'm assuming a hospital stops being a hospital if it's admin offices, right? I'm assuming it's medical care.
Yeah, I think so.
That doesn't seem appropriate for any of that space. Maybe urgent care, but not hospital space, it's too small.
I mean, that.
Urgent care, I can see, like, a lot of those.
Yeah, they're very helpful.
Urgent care, yes, I'm saying hospital, there's no, I mean, there wouldn't be space for a hospital.
Right.
So I would say hospital, no.
Like an imaging center or something like that, I don't know if that.
Does that still count as a hospital? That's what I'm saying, I don't know the boundary.
Well, this is where I got a lot of confusion coming out of our existing zoning uses.
I think, yeah. Special permit sounds alright.
Yeah.
Um, emergency care, I understand, I mean, it would just be like ambulances, you don't want ambulances coming out of there.
So no ambulances, urgent care, I would say yes. In other words, it's a retail, it's a great side, urgent care.
Yeah, sure.
My son split his head, could you please help me?
Totally, that'd be so helpful, yes.
Right, and then dental offices is all yes. Hospital, I would say no. A hospital is a place where you go and.
We need a definition of that.
I just think it's not necessary right there.
So I'm gonna say no on the hospitals, right?
Or a special permit. Are you saying instead of special permit, if you know?
Or what about?
Alright, well, this is where, alright, listen.
What would a birth center be?
Oh.
Special, do a special.
Or like a midwife's center.
We'll do special permit, and then veterinarian is yes, as long as there's no day or overnight boarding.
Okay.
And we get to the bottom of this chart on page nine.
Can you can you get overnight boarding with with a special permit? I mean, uh, I mean, I thought you had, I thought you had.
Well, you could do S P if you wanted overnight or day outside.
I don't care if animals are sleeping in the building, we just don't want them loose outside.
Right.
Or barking outside.
The next block is having to do, and it bleeds onto the top of page ten, is childcare, adult care, nursery, and elderly care.
Right. Why is elder care a special permit when childcare and adult care is okay?
I think what an elder care, meaning short-term non-operated as a medical facility, means daycare.
Elderly care?
Elderly care.
Okay, so that would be similar to adult daycare.
I don't have adult daycare.
Yeah, adult daycare.
Yeah, I I don't, I'm not sure why we would say no to elderly care.
I don't either, to me, it's like, it's like multi-generational.
Would that be a yes? Yes, I would I would say a yes, I don't know why that would be a special permit if everything else.
So these are day centers.
Those would be regulated by the Department of Health anyway.
That's correct. So going back to the bottom of page nine, are we okay with all those yeses there?
I think so.
Oh, I see, adult daycare is right there.
Right.
Their design might be different, I mean, security would have to, you know, if you have sort of a memory care, you know, day facility.
Yeah, I think we can go to civic institution.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, but I I would want our town to sort of embrace all care.
I would too.
Definitely, it's, yeah.
So we're gonna get down to civic and institutional, and, um, and, uh, I, these are very ambiguous definitions to me. Like, for instance, religious question mark, I think by law, you have to say yes for religious reasons.
It is really weird.
You do?
Yeah, I would, I would think so too.
I would be, I think the special permit on that one is just making sure we've.
Is it because of sort of the the people, the number of people at like certain times?
What is it, what is it now?
Verify with legal.
A lot of this, I think, is just not allowed.
Um, so what do you wanna do for religious? Leave it at special?
I don't understand the, um, definition, so I don't know.
Right, okay, so D E F, okay, so, um.
A rec center seems to be a really good thing, some, I that would, I I would think community center is too.
I think a community center or a rec center would be awesome.
Similar.
But a rec center means, does that mean?
Like pickleball.
It needs a lot of traffic.
Pickleball.
No, but does it mean, it does it mean?
I think pickleball is why we put special permit because they're, it's noisy. One of them, we put special permit because we have.
I mean, if it's in the pickleball, like Jinx Center does already.
So a community center is more passive activity.
Is it? Is that the definition?
But no, and this is what I mean, my, this is in my mental definition, my association.
Yeah.
Community centers like the Jinx, right?
Why is that passive?
No, it's not passive, it's not. Recreational center, I think of as outdoor and.
Maybe more 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 sedentary, is that what you're, or more quieter than?
Yeah, like.
But there's pickleball.
I know, there's pickleball, and they have yoga classes and zumba classes.
I don't understand the difference.
I don't understand the difference either.
Um, I think if we're saying yes for one.
A recreational center might be a basketball court, or.
Oh, I see.
I think that's what I was asking, is if rec center means outdoor.
I think rec center is always gonna mean outdoor activity.
Really?
So let's just say that this is.
We we win rec, we're outside constantly.
Say again?
That's our rec center, win rec.
Hmm.
Well, I guess if you if you could build a big enough.
Then let's just define it as that, we can do this, we can define community center as a primarily indoor gathering place for all kinds of activities that bring the heat community.
Well, I I would hope there'd be like a garden space too, where it could go outside.
There certainly could be, but it doesn't provide outdoor recreational fields or courts.
Okay.
So no outdoor courts or fields.
Well, I mean, we could love it, we just need, like, I just think we need to hear the design, the traffic flow, the, you know, like, just.
Well, so we could say if there's outdoor courts, it's special permit for the community center. If there's outdoor courts.
If there's outdoor laughing, then you need a special permit.
Say again?
If they're right laughing.
If you laugh outside.
Music, I wanna hear.
Yes.
And so a community center would be permitted, but if you wanna do any outdoor, like, spaces, like a big plaza
Okay.
where you could rent it out for a party or something, you should get a special permit for that, whereas recreation center implies outdoor
Okay.
recreation, and that would be by special permit, is that the definitions?
I guess so, yep.
Good with that?
Well, the tennis courts, you know, on Holton Street.
I know, but if a house, if the house next door to you got torn down and turned into a tennis court tomorrow, you'd be absolutely frustrated at three P M.
Indoor.
I would be even more so if it was a basketball court, because basketballs are even louder than tennis courts. Um, then we're saying everything like a museum and a public service, which I don't really know what that means, but maybe it means like.
I don't know, this is not from our own, like, our our own tables are much more clear about this, so I think we can just.
No, these are. Some of them are clear. I I I mean, I can look in our definitions for public service, it might actually be there, would be amazing, but true. Zoning by law, section ten, definitions, public, public. No, we have a definition of public means the town of Winchester, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the United States government or agency thereof.
Okay.
I mean, public services.
Like a library or something like that.
In the zoning bylaws, use regulations, and they only list essential services, everything else is municipal, except television antennas.
Okay, so, public service implies municipal uses, government uses.
Okay. Yeah, so, and temporary public events, which are.
Um, so we're saying special permit, no, public service, government uses is yes all the way across.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so like if we need to set the superintendent up in an office because the schools are.
Oh, true.
Down.
Right, yes, and then the private nonprofit club or lodge.
I mean, that's s- sounds like a rec center too, in some ways, and it's private, I I'd I'd say special permit sounds right.
And why do we say that?
Because it's not for everyone, and it's a, it's.
So it's exclusive?
Exclusive, and it's it's a rec sort of place.
And then I really like seeing.
A lot of gathering. Started building an eight-foot hedge around it that makes all the neighbors angry.
Right, so that would be special permit, and then when you go to community garden, we have said, no.
It's odd. That seems silly.
It does seem. So say for instance that you develop E one.
Well, we said yes, it says yes in West two, three.
Oh, I I think cause we wanted the density down there.
Hmm.
I don't know who.
But it can be on a rooftop or something too.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
I would say yes all the way across.
I would too.
And and part of the reason for that is that, um, the sustainability of our planet could come down to micro gardens everywhere.
Right.
Especially as the supply chains collapse.
But all the contractors have been calling Taylor about.
Victory gardens, everywhere.
We're gonna call it squash patch.
So we get down to these two hospitality uses, bed and breakfast and boutique.
I mean, that sounds.
It says no Airbnb, I mean, but what if someone calls it a different name, but it's essentially an Airbnb, or 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 is Airbnb a generic term?
Airbnbs are regulated in town, and we don't, we can't do them right.
So a bed and breakfast to me, and, cause I've, that used to be parrot on, right, when Dennis and I were traveling around in our thirties and stuff, is you get a bedroom, and you get breakfast, and it's usually in a home, and it's usually very nicey, dainty, nicey. And they don't require that you stay two nights or anything, it's like a hotel.
Sure. So we, so currently, we don't allow hospitality like that?
No.
Okay.
As far as I know, can we verify that in section three?
I mean, my special permit sounds okay. I mean, it's a lot of, it's a lot of, um, turnover and a lot of, you know, in and out, but it, not any different than, say, like a dentist office.
Yeah, and when we do the parking requirements by uses, we have an opportunity to acknowledge where economic development is highly thwarted with restricted parking, and economic development will be fine with more restricted parking. Right, like if you're running a hotel, and you have ten guest rooms, are we gonna say one to one?
Probably not.
We'll get there in a minute, but that's the kind of consideration.
So.
So, is this all special permit?
I think that always needs to be special permit.
Do you?
I absolutely do.
I don't know if it's gonna be helpful.
I don't think we should have a low barrier to hotels in town.
Well, there was a gentleman who came to one of our Jenk, to the Jenks Center event, and advocated for there being a boutique hotel.
I mean, lots of people would put their parents up there, I'm not saying I don't see the need for it, I don't think it needs to be like a no, but I think it should be. It's a lot of traffic in and out, it's, it's not the same as a dentist office, you're there for half an hour and you go home. You know, like, these are people staying in the community, like, we definitely wanna hear about it in the layout and the.
You know, say they're, they're staying there to go to the graduation toss.
I mean, we can't, we don't know what they're doing.
No, but I'm saying, that's why you don't know what in and out.
I have no idea why they picked a small town, like, close to Boston but not too close.
Yeah, 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 it could be anything.
I, I mean, I would, I would hope that the housing we build is housing for, not temporary, but um.
Well, if we say yes.
That to be, you know, we want that.
If we say yes across these two lines, is that a flashpoint at town meeting?
I also think like.
I just wanna hear again what you guys each think of that.
Maybe, I think so.
It is absolutely impossible to guess what's gonna be a flashpoint at town. It is like, absolutely, you're thrown at the dart at the board.
Well, do you think?
Special permitting boutique holes, hotels will be the?
No, do you think if we said yes, you personally, if you were sitting at town meeting voting, would you say yes, or special permit to these two uses, would you?
I would be happy with a special permit, because I don't want it to be a chain where the person who, oh, I mean, we're having all this trouble getting Starbucks to change a window, 'cause it's like sixteen layers of bureaucracy, we're all picturing like someone putting up four bedrooms, and like, it could be a small chain boutique, like, we could end up with like a micro hotel or something.
And so, Yeching, are you still, are you on the board with the special?
I, um, I, I don't like more regulation on, on investment here, and I, I just don't know the market viability of getting a, a hotel here, I, so I don't, I don't love that there is special permit, but.
Well, what if we said, it's allowed by right? No, special permit gives us design review and site.
It's fine, yeah, whatever, yeah, that's fine. I, I would rather see permit housing, but let's, let's.
Well, let's go down to residential.
No, okay, so no, let's, let's stay on that, and then just say special permit, and then we keep going.
Okay, yeah, so the two hospitality roads all the way across all seven districts are special permit.
Okay, check.
And we'll keep that there, and now we're gonna go to residential, okay? So, here's the hierarchy, single family, two families, three to five unit, six to twenty-four, and over twenty-five.
Okay, we talked about single family last time, and it was fine, that's fine.
And then, two-family dwelling.
That's interesting.
See, I almost say no.
What, why?
I say yes to that.
Me too.
A special permit.
I say yes, if they can fit it in, and um, still maximize their profits, I think people do enjoy having two families.
Families, yeah.
I would switch the, the special permits to yeses for two-family.
Okay, so let's look at the, the districts, so starting with E, East One and West One, that's the ones down the skilings. Uh, you could say no to two-family, but yes to three to five, six to twenty-four, and twenty-five plus.
Yes, I, I think that's fine.
So let's, for E one and West One, we're gonna change three to five units to a yes.
E one and West one.
And West One, three to five units is yes. Now, going back to two-family.
It would be especially good in the smaller residential districts, I think, to allow them.
Rather say, say yes.
So, yes.
Even, yes, so W two, so a- anything but W one, W E one.
So, E three would also be yes.
Yes.
I, I think yes is straight across, except for.
I mean, someone could take the anchor house and turn it into a two-family property, and that would be permitted.
Some models are small parcels, and they have, but.
It would be great.
So, to recap, um, the two-family dwelling yeses are on um, E three, and W two, three, and four.
Two, three, four.
Two, three, four, E three, so why, why not the, why not just the others?
Bigger lots, and we wanna promote denser housing.
What about E two?
That's a bigger area, I would say, I would say increase the density there.
Right, okay, so the noes for two-family are E one, East One and West One, plus East Two.
Yes.
Wait, so are we just changing the, the special permit to yeses?
Some of the E two parcels are small though, aren't they?
The E twos, yes.
Well, this is, so this is, someone's gonna turn my fifty-five main into a duplex.
And then, I mean, some of the E one properties are also small, they're already two families.
I know, but we really wanna change E one, so I think E two, we leave two-family and know that it's, like, one of them is tiny.
So, multi-family is all yeses.
So, E two, we're gonna put yes for two-family?
Yes.
Okay.
E two is a yes for two-family?
Yes, you're allowed it.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
Okay.
So the only noes for two-family are the E one and West One.
Yes, correct.
Sorry that we're boring you. Tedious, um, thank you for being here. So, um, then we go to yes, 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 all the way across for a six to twenty-four unit apartment building, and the only place where we don't permit a twenty-five foot plus apartment building is in the Upper West Side.
And E.
And E three.
Oh, and E three.
Yeah.
Which is also, I agree with that.
Okay.
You guys agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do.
Okay, and then this cluster development, I would just put by special permit, because, um.
They can get more control over how it looks.
Yes. So, one thing that's not in here is the residential definition of live-work unit. We do have something that kind of touches on that, which is artisanal studio, very first thing on first page. Um, and so, if I can get that definition, um, defined, then that question becomes, is that an artisanal live-work studio? Question mark. And this is just to close up this discussion.
Um, nursing assisted living.
I'm sorry, say again?
Nursing assisted living, special permit.
Oh, yeah, we have two more.
And live work.
Oh, and there's work, there's live work right there.
Yeah.
Nursing assisted living, why is it special permit? Isn't that part of, um, care?
Well, under, under care.
Those are more sort of temporary care, this is more.
Well, see, it says elder care, short-term non-operated as a medical facility, versus nursing and assisted living, so think of, um.
Isn't there one already on Swanton?
Yeah, yeah, there is.
Yeah, that, there's a nursing home, and there's a rehabilitation center, and then there's, is it Mont Vernon House, what's the name of the house?
Yeah, Mont Vernon.
Right, that's a.
And that's a nursing and assisted living, not, not as much nursing, but you.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
As much as permitted.
Assistant living, I think.
It's, so, um.
I'm not sure why we need a special permit, though, it's.
I think because we wanna know what it's gonna look like, I mean.
Because it's, it's just not gonna be big.
Parking laws, it's.
Yes. So let me tell you about my research with live work, really quickly. Um, it's generally defined as a place where, it's a residential place where you can do your work.
Mm-hmm.
It's also a commercial place where you can sleep overnight. Like, you know all those people that illegally sleep in their offices overnight, 'cause they got divorced and kicked out or whatever? This is, you live there and you work there, and so then some towns say it can't be any more than fifty-fifty. Or some towns say that, because they're trying to incentivize, you know, commercial production in a neighborhood, like artisanal studio, it could be sixty-forty or.
Right, so another reason why they would have live work is a, um, reuse of a building, say, a building type that was deep and cannot get light in through, you can do a live-work loft, so that you can just, um, have not that uh, kinda like ten Converse at the ba- base, right, where they had really deep, tall lots, um, units, and they made them into residential units, because they couldn't have the bedrooms near the edge.
I think we can do yes there, but in the definitions, um, like, one thing that I noticed in the definitions for live work around the country is that, um, they reference higher ventilation and fire suppression requirements for live work spaces than they do for a regular residential place.
Mm-hmm.
Cause say you're a potter and you make dust, or say you blow glass and you've got fumoyd, right? And those would be live-work facilities, right? So, I think we can do it in the definition.
Okay.
About the additional regulations.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
So, what we wanna do lastly, really quick, is, and then I also have one more topic to take up with you, which is incentives, but I wanna look really quickly, oh, I guess we already did it, at the noes that are in the existing table.
I don't have it up here, do I?
No, I can't, I don't know if you can do that.
No, I can't, I can't.
Let me, I don't know how to cast.
No, you don't, no, I don't, no, you can't.
So, I ran through them briefly, just, I, I can do it again, really quickly. The noes for GBD two and three right now is conversion of a single-family dwelling um, into a duplex, providing the conversion does not require for safety or other reasons, any exterior changes. And further, the lot has to be at least eleven thousand square feet, that's in our existing residential uses zoning. And if we just simply say instead, two-family dwelling, yes, but not for the, the denser ones, which is E one, West One, that covers it.
Okay.
Okay, so, the other noes in GBD one, two, a garden apartment, we're gonna fix that. Townhouse or dwelling, we're fixing that, combination of business and residential mixed use, we're addressing that. Um, the other node, um, is cluster residential, we made it special permit, and multi-use development, we said yes, right, with incentive. Um, and then I'm going down the noes in the GBD, oh, two and three column, right? And, um, we said special permit for country club and sporting grounds, and hospital, we said no, orphanage, whatever, cantor, no, and cemetery, no. And then, um, agricultural use, like, like, uh, agriculture or community garden, in our table would say yes. Um, scrolling down to the next no is, yeah, we did this waste television studio, um, other noes um, are the drive-through in GBD two and three. Um, and we also said that for GBD three, you cannot have an undertaking or feasible establishment, and you cannot have a general service establishment. And whatever a general service establishment is, I think we probably wanna allow it in, in GBD three.
Yeah.
So, that means that we're looking at West two, three, four, and we're looking at E two and three, or E three, oh, yeah, E two and three, actually, all of them, and we're saying, well, we need a definition now, definitions, general service.
It was sort of the pot that we put, a lot of things that we didn't know.
So, picture framing is a general service establishment, upholstery is a general service establishment.
Do, pet grooming, that was one, that we put in.
I mean, if it's, if it gets to your body, it becomes personal services, hair, nails, skin, all that else. Um, but, okay, so we're comfortable saying, while it says no right now in the GBD two and three, we're saying yes across the board.
Hairdressing.
What?
Wasn't, do we have hairdressing as like a separate?
Well, it's under personal services, yeah, so, um, gosh, I just lost my place, here, table of uses, here we go, okay, and then, and then, um, going, continuing through commercial uses, right, um, okay, we're saying in our new table for MU one, fast food, drive-through is special permit. Um, we're saying that, um, indoor, right now, indoor commercial amusement or assembly use is not permitted in GBD two and three. That would be like.
Bouncy gym.
Say what?
A bouncy gym, indoor, say that again.
It, it says in here, indoor commercial amusement or assembly use, so is that a pool hall, is that, is that a, um, like, a, where the, Billy, what's the big Buster's place?
Dave's.
Right, and then this, uh, the other place.
In the current zoning, those are not permitted in GBD two and three.
So, what's like Revolution Hall? You went to Revolution Hall.
Isn't that a brewery?
But it's, it has games, shuffleboard and ping pong.
See, I'm not opposed to it in some districts, are you? Can you imagine it anywhere?
Like E one?
Okay, so, we wanna add to our special table, we wanna say, under commercial, which is on page.
Perhaps E one and E two.
We don't have it as.
But maybe E two might be getting too close to residential stuff.
I don't know where to categorize it, so, I'm just gonna write it in, and we're gonna call it.
Place is a public assembly on page four, but then where did they put it on the?
Cause we have one more big task to do before we go, but, what you say, page four, I got lost.
That's the only place I see public assembly listed.
And that was in, um.
I mean, I.
Where did you see public assembly?
It's, it's under a dimensions table.
Oh, I see. Oh, we're going down the nose over here, right, do we wanna add indoor commercial amusement or assembly use to the opined uses in our new table for North Main? So it's group.
I just think we have to define it, like, I mean, we certainly would love like a.
Group for use number six.
Ping pong hall.
Number six is defined.
Kids coding plays, like a.
Oh, you think that's an assembly?
I don't, I don't know, like, if it's just an open after-school.
For, for it to be very vibrant.
Yeah, I see.
We're gonna, we're gonna define that.
But I could also.
And then say yes or SP, depending on what the definition is, okay? So that's work to do, it's important, all these DEFs is huge amount of work. And, and I mentioned to Diab, is, is legal gonna write those, and he said, no, I think the planning board and the planning department are gonna write them.
Okay.
So, we have to be.
Someone reviews them.
Oh, legal will review it, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so, the other thing that I'm just going through the existing table of uses and looking at special permits and noes, and because to group four, line eleven, is veterinary establishment, kennel or place supporting of animals conducting entirely within a building, so we've kind of covered that, okay? And then kennel owned and operated by the town is a no, we're not gonna allow that, they are on, the town has a kennel, like, the transfer station for runaway dogs. Um, and then we get to the motor vehicle uses, we already talked about, and then, okay, so would we want ever there to be a commercial parking garage?
Maybe.
Um, yeah, maybe.
Let the market decide that, I think.
So.
I think it might be.
I mean, like, great stop and shop, and then, like, use some.
Commercial parking garage would be a yes.
We could mandate.
Or would we make like a special?
Parking for everyone else, but we can't.
No, it can, it could be.
What? It could be anywhere?
No, I'm asking about in all of the seven sub-districts of North Main Street, would a commercial parking garage be a yes in all districts, or a special permit in some districts?
Um.
I mean, the, the design of it matters, right, 'cause we don't, I mean.
But I almost think that you could only put a commercial parking lot in.
Yeah, it takes a lot of, um, driving lanes.
We could say yes to E two, E one, E two, and West One.
I think so.
All right, so.
What about E three?
Yes to E one and West One, and E two. And when you're saying, what about E three?
Yeah. Yeah, I think E three.
And E three, so this is all about the depth of the lots, which is why we made these districts.
And it's adjacencies.
Adjacency, right, and then, the only other one that is a no in your commercial, oh, commercial greenhouse sales room, it's not permitted on North Main Street right now.
Greenhouse sales room. Oh, that'd be so nice.
It would be so nice.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm gonna say, we're gonna add, commercial greenhouse or sales room, and we put it as a yes all the way across, right?
I think so.
I'm assuming some of this is worried about what critters it will attract. Like, the food one, I'm assuming, we're thinking, like, that's, that's my restaurant hesitation, so I don't know.
Maybe community gardens too, kind of a thing.
Right, exactly.
Community gardens also, but we have so many critters.
Wildlife corridors, I'm just saying, like, the ones that are.
So, the planning board can promulgate regulations, and we can say, for instance, in our regulations for uses, if it's a commercial greenhouse, you have to show the Board of Health that you're managing bugs. And if you're doing dogs, you have to show the Board of Health that you're managing dog waste.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And if you're doing, um, a public gathering space and indoor entertainment,
Yeah.
um, it's a special, it's not, it's, it could be a yes, but, um, the provision is, the, the table of uses note is The planning board reserves the right to ensure that noise or whatever is.
Yeah.
Or the SPGA reserves the right. To manage noise.
I think that's reasonable, like, you get shut down if you don't, you don't do that.
I'm gonna say, commercial greenhouse or sales room, yes, across all districts. And then, I'm gonna say no to all these industrial uses. Um, which are already no, except, oh, in GBD three, you are allowed. A laboratory in a building or part of a building equipped to conduct scientific experiments, research tests, or investigations. And the reason for that in GBD three is because E two has a big lab building.
Mm, it does.
So, you could say that in the existing uses map, in group five, which is industrial uses. Number four, laboratory, could be.
I just don't think that's the goal for this stretch, though. Like, I just, I think it's the goal for light industrial, and we should bring it back up for that.
So, should we take it out?
But does it stop some businesses from operating if you take that out, you know? Because these.
I don't think so, like, who's dying to put a lab on North Main?
Well, the, the existing lab building is a big one-story building sitting on a really nice piece of land.
Yeah.
And over the next ten, twenty, thirty, forty years, might somebody decide to use that land for something besides a laboratory?
Right.
Cause it's an existing use right now.
Mm-hmm.
Would they wanna take that building and turn it into a daycare center? They might. Would they wanna turn it into a rec center?
Right, we were, we were trying to encourage Holton Street to be, be that kind of.
Yeah, I kinda think no here for lab space.
Okay, so lab space is no.
Is that what, is that what it already is?
No, it's, it's no for everything except GBD three and IL.
I mean, it doesn't, changing the zoning now doesn't kick the lab out, right?
No, it doesn't take it out.
So they're, they're.
Lab space would be no all the way.
If you wanna renovate or do something extra, I think they would, they would get hurt.
I mean, we are trying to encourage the IL district to, to take on some very contemporary definitions of industrial uses.
Should we leave the lab for E two? Um.
Well, no, if it's there, it's there, we're not taking down any.
I just don't think it's the field, I mean, we're not looking.
This is, what do we wanna encourage? What do we wanna say, yes, go for it, no special permit needed? Okay, and then, um, accessory uses, well, there was an accessory use that is permitted. See, okay. Uh, live work, use of a proportion of a dwelling by a resident engaged in a home occupation. So if you're doing live work and you're a real estate agent and you have a first floor office and you live on the second and third floor. That's a, that's a use of a portion of a dwelling by a resident engaged in a home occupation. Kind of like live work, if we're gonna say yes to live work, we would say yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's possible anyways.
As separate units, or as first floor of a, one contiguous home?
It, it depends, I mean.
Cause you're allowed to see, like, single client, like, a Realtor seeing, like, one client at a time, that's fine in their home, right?
Right, I think that, yes.
But I mean, that's, that's fine today.
Yeah.
Do we have a lot more of these?
No, we're onto the bottom of the, of the thing, Nick, and then we also wanna talk about incentives really quickly.
I just, I just wanna make sure that, um, that Michael realizes that he can look at Brookline, or that we, that we think that he.
Oh, he absolutely can, and so can we.
Okay.
Yes, I mean.
Not that we have ti- a whole lot of time tonight to do that.
This is what concerns me about our timeline, getting to the, the, the hearing on the fourteenth.
Yeah.
Of March, right? Is that we need to nail down the maximum amount that we can, knowing that the five-week window between the publication of the warrant. Okay, and the opening of town hall. My experience in this town is that in that five-week window, it happens that certain things rise sufficiently to the surface. That the proponent introduces, um, an amendment or something, right when it comes up to the table, to the podium. They say, yes, based on input from the community, we wish to propose, right from the get-go, this change to our article. And we can do that, I think.
Yeah.
I, Nick, I, I, I do wanna talk about your thing too, the design view guidelines, and I, I think that's a, that's. That attacking that whole thing and taking from Brookline is a whole conversation.
Is it, is in itself, cause Brookline did classic form-based code with that, and I don't know that we're ready to go.
No, they, they did a, I think that was an investment about, like, one point two million dollars, is what I saw.
Yeah, and they used the top national.
With like, a ton of community meetings that we did not do. Um, that, so, it, we can't just.
Right, but what I'm talking about is the design, the designs.
Sure, but we haven't had any conversations yet.
Do, do we even have a draft that, I mean, this, okay, let me just finish this exercise.
Well, that's why I wanna have.
Hold on, group, group seven.
I wanna have it included in the draft that we review.
But we can't just, it has, it, we should talk about it. We, I was hoping you would have some time today to bring your thoughts up, but.
Who, Nick?
Should we just have a lot of material to cover, it's just, we're not, we'll, we will get to it, it just won't be tonight.
I know, well, so, what, what? What, what are we not giving you?
I think we should give, uh, Michael.
What?
Permission to just draw from it as he sees fit. I, 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 I don't feel like going through every single detail.
Oh, no, I think.
I, I, but I know it's a good, I know it's a good piece of work.
But it's a good piece of work for Brook.
If they spent two million dollars on it, I mean.
We can, we can take what.
But, but it's about community meetings too, which we did not have.
Well, we're gonna have to have design guidelines or design development standards in place by the fourteenth.
We're gonna need design. Right, I mean, we're.
Yeah.
And we're gonna get there.
Are we?
Yes.
We need to talk about parking.
Yes, we are, so, um, the parking is one of the things that we have to go back to right now, and we have to correlate it to all the uses that we did. And if we're not able to do that in this meeting, we'll tie it up in the next meeting. But we need to understand at least a philosophical approach.
And if you could maybe, um, summarize the Z-RAC meeting about it, because I was surprised from Taylor what they, they came up with.
Right, so, the Z-RAC group, Taylor said, you know, a lot of people are doing zero minimum parking.
Yeah, Z-RAC said zero.
And they were surprisingly supportive.
Yeah.
I would like to propose that if we want to incentivize developer investment in public infrastructure improvements. That they be possibly incentivized by further lowering the parking.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the parking tables that we're looking at are lower than what's in place now, it matches CBD. I'm trying to find my parking.
Point seven five, page four.
Here it is, page four, thank you. So, right now, the CBD zoning is, uh, point seven five per residential unit. Point seven five per thousand square feet of commercial and restaurant space. And one seat for, one, one parking space for every four seats of a, of a public gathering. Right? So, those are, those are the low end of our spectrum right now. If we went to zero. In certain places, it would be because we're incentivizing a certain thing.
Mm-hmm.
And incentivizing commercial is written right now in our draft zoning that you get an extra floor of height. If you wanna incentivize other things, like, I wanna incentivize developer funds going into infrastructure improvements in the public realm. Um, would we incentivize that with perhaps lowering the parking to zero?
Okay, so when we last talked, we, we, we talked about, um, bringing point seven five unit, the CBD minimum. For residential, all the way up to W two. And then the rest was one.
Uh, um, well, it, so, that's interesting, let me just look at this.
So.
Z-RAC, oh, no, don't look at Z-RAC, the TV suggested.
No, 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 don't. Right.
That E one and west one, very close to Skilling's, would be point seven five per unit, cause it's, it's within a half mile of the transition. Right?
As well as west two.
As well as west two, and then E two, which is where nine fifty-five is, I think.
Mm-hmm.
And E three, which is where the big lab building and, and, no, that's E two, which is where Anka is, would be one to one.
Mm-hmm, because it's further away from the center.
Further away.
Yeah.
And then, um, the corollary with per thousand square feet, if it's, if it's mixed use.
Right.
Or, no, commercial, excuse me, commercial.
So it's interesting, then, the Z-RAC suggestion was similar to us for E one and W one, point seven five, but then zero for the rest. Because they, I, I, I mean, I'm reading this, I wasn't at the meeting, but I'm reading this as.
That's me.
Interesting, because it's farther from the center, but it's more investment possi-, you know, more incentive for people to invest.
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't get from the Z-RAC meeting that they were wanting to keep the point seven five for east one and west one.
Oh, they wanted out zero throughout.
I don't know that we, they were that specific.
Oh.
So the question for us is.
But Taylor also told me that they were for that, but it's politically better for it to pass than if they would be for the point seven five.
That's why I'm trying to use it as an incentive for something that the town really, really needs. Which is help with improving the infrastructure when you do a big new development on North Main Street.
So then you would then advocate for the zero or for the point seven five?
Well, if it's, if it's.
She wants to list it as point seven five and allow zero as an, as, with an extraction.
I, I think I do. But I, I, I don't know, because I'm looking at what you're looking at, that E three, E two, E three. And W two, three, and four are farther away.
Mm-hmm.
So why would you say no?
Mm-hmm.
Why would you say zero? That if anything, E one and west one could be zero. And the others would be point seven five incentivized, I mean, you could even incentivize it to point one, I mean, excuse me. To something above zero, but not point one, or below seven five, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm. Like, how, point five, right.
Um, so, should, um, so, the parking incentive question, do we like the idea at all?
I mean, I don't, I don't like the idea of putting zero parking in per unit. Under, like, I don't care what they're giving us, because you're putting all the cars on the street.
Right, so, in, in, so, in. In the cases where the Z-RAC suggested zero, which is the E two, E three, and W two, three, and four. You're saying that it would either be point seven five or one.
This is like, the one place where I think the Z-RAC is wrong.
Well, it might be recorded too, I mean.
No, it's not, no, I actually talked to Taylor about it, he was like.
Thank you.
I sense.
So, so in fact, then, let's just, let's start with E one and west one, we're okay with point seven five per unit and point seven five per thousand square feet. And that would be not the highest level of parking requirement, it would be sort of the middle level. The highest level is point one for a thousand square feet, or point one per unit.
What?
Where are you saying point one?
Yeah, what are you saying?
Not point one, I'm sorry, one, I don't mean point one, I mean one, sorry, sorry, sorry.
One. Right.
Right, so, like, E two is showing at one, looking at the planning board's suggested line, E three. Um. Uh, W three, W four.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's okay to me. But then, um, if we did any incentivizing for a lower permit, if you did something we'd re, I mean, a lower requirement for parking. If you did something we really, really need you to do. You would get a point, you would get a point five per unit and a point five per thousand square feet?
What is it that we want them to do, to, like, max out the?
Well, so, p- part of the vision of North Main Street, and this is, I'm sorry, I'm doing this so late, is this whole complete streets re- reconstruction, right? The town doesn't have money to do that, the town can apply to Department of Transportation for major infrastructure grants. And the town can ask people who are developing the North Main Street to build the public realm outside their property to. Um, an agreed-upon master plan for streetscape improvements for the public realm.
So you wanna extract, like, pocket parts and benches and street trees?
Street lamps and, 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 and lamp.
I don't know how to write that in.
Oh, I can write it in, I, I, I can, I can.
What do you think I was doing before this meeting?
This also includes undergrounding the power lines. And so, um, like, what you, like, you see it a lot in residential neighborhoods, you'll have this giant house, okay? And they don't wanna have a power line going to the, the corner of their house. So they underground the electricity on a pole on the opposite side of the sidewalk. And their whole, in property, has no power lines, invisible.
I wonder if this takes more time.
On Main Street, incrementally bury the power lines along Main Street by.
It's like a huge.
Oh, it's a giant.
Like, I don't think any amount of parking forgiveness is gonna make up for that expense, that's a huge expense. They're like coordinating with EverSource, like, that's like a whole nightmare.
I don't, we just haven't done that anywhere else.
Well, we're undergrounding the electrical at water field. There's no power lines running across anything to get the electricity into water.
That's like their own, that's a whole, that's a whole other.
Yeah, right, but if somebody was, somebody aggregated a lot and wanted to do, I don't know what the numbers are now.
I think it's a little aspirational for the scope of the project we're trying to do right now.
So we don't wanna do any parking incentives.
Not saying we don't wanna do any parking incentives, I don't know if we define it as, like, we could also do it for sustainability, we could do it for, you know, we could.
Adaptive reuse.
Adaptive reuse, like, there are other things that are very doable, very easy to digest for folks.
So this is one thing Diab asked me to talk to us about.
I think we need to, we're getting there.
We're getting very close, Nick, I know you wanna go. Diab asked us to discuss the kinds of incentives that we can introduce, okay? So, we know one of them is you get an extra story of height, or an extra X feet of height, extra X feet of height. Another one is that we might adjust downward, not eliminate, but adjust downward parking requirement if you do X, right?
I'll yield on my three feet of green space.
Well, but say you wanted to do less green space. Um. You would have to do something that we wanted in exchange. Is what these incent, that's how the incentives work, right?
Yeah.
Do we have to submit this with this submission? I mean, I have a million ideas, but the, I don't know if we need to.
I wanna hear them.
Really?
Looking at the clock.
No, I think we should do, we should do it next time, I think we should do it next time, I, I don't think we should start a new topic.
Nine forty-five.
And I think we need Taylor to guide some of that, or Michael Wang.
So, we're not gonna get to incentives tonight.
Cause I don't wanna start creating a.
But I would like to sort of move on this parking since we're on it.
Okay, yes.
If we're gonna go lean towards Z-RAC or sort of stay with what we had talked about.
I would stay with what we talked about.
I think so too, I just think that that would, I, I like the zero, but I, I just don't think that, it's too much.
I don't think we have the zero, don't think we're there.
It's too much all our town needing to.
Z-RAC is populated with people who have really embraced forward-looking something.
Yeah.
And I honor and respect that.
I think it's both.
And we have to bring.
It was also a Valentine's meeting and they were missing four members.
It's true, so, so, I just wanna look at my, I had a cheat sheet because my brain failed. Dimensional standards, uses table, parking minimums, incentives.
I do wanna talk about Nick's thing bef- because I don't want it to, like, sort of get pushed back and then not be able to be, be a big deal about it. But I, I do wanna hear from you what, what you're looking for, what, what we're missing, and.
I don't have specifics about what I'm looking for.
Right, so I don't think you can.
And I don't know what we're missing, all I know is that they did a.
That's nuts, that's nuts, Nick, when, if you give somebody a hundred and fifty-page document and say, take from that what you will for our town.
No, well, there, there are twenty pages.
With three weeks left, like, that's nuts.
Well, we, we haven't talked at all about, about the design guidelines.
So.
The design.
And, and I don't wanna do it from scratch, I just wanna say, let's just use this, because this is.
I'm not sure you can copy and paste Brookline thing into our thing at this moment.
It has to be line by line customized to our town, and I believe that that is a task that we need to take on, like, pronto, as all tasks are. Um, and that one is the next one.
Well, that's why I would, I, I would like, I would like, um, Michael Wang to look at it.
Okay, but also, we're like at the maximum of our contract with them.
Oh, we are?
I, we had such a hard time getting them to go to some of these other mea-, I mean, for, for the.
Community meetings?
Yeah, for the community meetings, like, there's a lot, there's a lot that we're asking of them, and if this is really important to you, I think it needs to be called out. And, and identified and be explained so that we can, we can digest this and incorporate it. But without that kind of drive and just saying, here's a hundred and forty.
No, 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 it's not a hundred and forty, it's, it's twenty pages.
Okay, so what is it in that information?
I, I would like him, I would like him.
Refer to them as development standards.
No, because this is something that's been, uh, worked out, it's, it, it's, I, I don't feel qualified to write this.
Mm-hmm.
I feel that Michael is qualified.
Michael has.
But I, but I don't want him to reinvent the wheel.
He shouldn't have to.
When, when they've done all the work for us, and, and have done a better job than we can do.
Okay, so, to, to meet your point and to get us out of here as quickly as we can. Can the minutes reflect that the next steps in this incredibly complex process for North Main Street? Is to get all these changes to the dimensional and the uses and all the definitions met, def- defined, right, written. And to take the development standards that have been submitted by Michael already, he's given us stuff already. And, and go through it and customize it.
No, I, I can't, I, I can't, I can't, I, I, I'm not qualified to do that, and I'm not gonna do that. I, I think that he needs to look at the twenty pages and see what he can live from there.
Okay, so, the development standards that, that, that Nick is requesting, um, that.
Which I've looked at, I've, I've, I have, I have excerpted the pages to make it easier.
Michael Wang, um, I wanna say.
He can probably look at it in rel- with relative ease, compared to any of us. He can probably look at it with relative ease compared to any of us.
Morph 20 pages of Brookline form-based code into development standards for North Main Street. And I believe that we're closer to that than, than I-
I think he could look at this and know exactly what's there. Whereas I'm looking at it, I'm saying, okay, I know it's good, but I, I don't know, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know how to intersperse it or, or reformulate it in my own words.
Well, I think that what I'm hearing you say is that you don't have the technical skill to create them, but once they're created, you have a basis for saying, yes, that's what I'm looking for.
Well, I, I, I know that this is a good end product. Like, I'm, I'm try, you know-
Yeah, right, but I mean, are you gonna participate at all in it?
Maybe, yeah.
I mean, I would hope that you would as a member of the board.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we're gonna sit down with the development standards in the next week and a half.
Right.
It has to happen fast. And we will get all members of the board to weigh in. And you weigh in as much as you can understand, weigh in on. If you can't understand it, you say so or you don't weigh in.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I'm, I think I'm ready to uh-
Okay.
Uh-
Did you get all that?
I did.
You, oh God, it's- Should we entertain a motion?
I'll, I'll uh-
Oh, Eric, I wanna hear everybody's consensus on that.
Oh.
Are we, are we done?
I think so.
Okay, Nick?
I move that we adjourn.
I will second that.
Aye.
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 Okay, we did it. Thank you, Wayne, Tom.
Oh, boy.